...on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all...
Thank you, Ms. Story. And next, we need a certification of the closed meeting, Mr. Waller.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of July 9, 2020 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, whereas the School Board of the City of Suffolk convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia as amended requires a certification by the School Board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this resolution of certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Suffolk.
So moved. Second?
One second.
Board members, please vote. Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have items in closed meeting. Personnel report, Dr. Buck.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the personnel report with one amendment. Board Member Story.
I would like to make a motion that we increase the stipend of the clerk of the School Board by 1%.
Second.
Board members, please vote. Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Motion carried. And now, Dr. Gordon?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several administrators that we would like to recognize publicly tonight. First is our new Supervisor of Science Instruction, Ms. Kaitlyn Leitner-Black, if Kaitlyn is here. Yes, she is. Come on up.[1775.71][1775.71](APPLAUSE). Kaitlyn previously served as one of our science specialists. She has a Bachelor of Science from Raffey University in interdisciplinary studies. She also has a Master's Degree of Art from Avery University in curriculum and instruction. With our transition of Ms. Taylor to the Assistant Principal role at elementary level, Ms. Leitner-Black is on a tremendous job and is... Ms. Leitner Black has done a tremendous job in this transition taking over. She has some great ideas for STEM, and we're so happy that Ms. Leitner Black has his new promotion. So, Kaitlyn, I'll turn it over to you if you have any new or any family members here in attendance.
Good evening. I am humbled and excited to serve as the Supervisor of Science Instruction. I look forward to continuing the collaborative work we do to ensure we do what's best for all students. Thank you.
And Ms. Black, I want to tell you, I've been watching you since you were Rookie Teacher of the Year, and you have really been a wonderful asset to Suffolk Public Schools. Continue the good work.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Dr. Chelsea Cupp, who is our new Supervisor of Professional Learning. Chelsea comes to us from Pic辛 Public Schools. She has a Bachelor's Degree from William &amp; Mary, a Master's Degree from William &amp; Mary, and a Doctorate Degree from William &amp; Mary, so we have a triple tribe member over here. Chelsea has tremendous ideas on what we're going to do as we are trying to respond to this pandemic. She's sent me several emails already with some things to address social-emotional learning and really starting to work on our pre-service week. She is hit to ground running. And, Dr. Culp, if you have any family members or any words you'd like to say, now's your opportunity.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, my husband has been an elementary P.E. teacher here in Suffolk for many years, and my son just started at the Main Street Daycare, so we're excited to have our whole family come and join in Suffolk Public Schools, so thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Next, for one of our new positions that we added for this school year, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction is Dr. Maria Lawson-Davenport. Dr. Davenport is also an internal promotion, as she was Supervisor of Advanced Instruction previously with a Bachelor of Arts from Hampton University, Master from William &amp; Mary, and a Doctorate from Regent University. During the time as we were transitioning from Dr. Harrison's move to Chesapeake, really, Dr. Davenport has served as both Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Chief Academic Officer, and for the last month, she has worn these two hats with great eloquence and grace. We're just so excited about the work that she has, and there's not a question that I don't ask Maria that she already knows. So, Dr. Davenport, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. I'm really excited to begin this position. I am truly vested in Suffolk. I have three boys who are in Suffolk Public Schools, one at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. We live in Suffolk, and I was a teacher at Lakeland for seven years, so I really enjoy this community, so I'm looking forward to doing great things in Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Dr. Okema Branch, who's going to be our new Chief Academic Officer. She comes to us from Franklin City Public Schools, where she was Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Branch has a Bachelor of Arts from Norfolk State, a Master's of Arts from George Washington, and her Doctorate also from Regent University. She comes to us with several years of experience at both the higher education as well as the K-12 level. Dr. Branch, give you an opportunity to introduce any family members you have here and also to say a few words to the board.
Greetings, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and School Board. Dr. Gordon, thank you all. I am pleased to rejoin Suffolk Public Schools. I began my educational career as a third grade teacher at Nanceman Parkway Elementary School, and worked there for several years before at Dancing. I am humbled to be in this position. I'm thankful to be joining such a great team, a great leader. I look forward to the collaboration and all that we will do to continue to make Suffolk Public Schools the best school division, not only in Virginia, but in the world. I am joined by my wonderful husband, Charles Bo Branch, and we are the parents of three adult men. One of them, our son Gary, we call him G, is also here with me. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to all of you playing a vital part in Suffolk Public Schools, and for those that are returning or moving to a new position, we appreciate that you've stayed with us and you see the dream that we have for Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you so much. And moving now to the approval of the agenda. Dr. Buck?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Second? Yes. I'm sorry.
Hold up, just one second.
One second. We're going to add one thing to the agenda. We have as an information item, that should be as an information item and not an action item. The presentation tonight on our plan for reopening schools should be listed, it was listed as an action item, it should be listed as an information item. So please make that correction. It should be listed as an information item. There is no action on that item tonight. Thank you. Now, I move to approve with that adjustment, the agenda for this evening.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second. Board members, please vote. Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
No.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have Public Speakers on Agenda Topics. The first person we have is Patricia Holloman.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I need to read the statement for Public Speakers.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, Clark.
It is the intent of the School Board to ensure that the affairs of the Board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the Board are afforded an opportunity to do so. Any persons addressing the Board shall confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the School Board. Two, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults, intend to incite violence, or breach of the peace. Three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect. Four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the Board, which can be up to five minutes unless the Board, through the exercise of its discretion, decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment. Refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks. Six, refrain from making any comment regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate forum for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceeding. The School Board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. School Board members will listen to public comments but will not comment unless granted permission by the Chair. The Chairman or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the Board. At the request of the Chairman, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at all Board meetings. That officer shall, under the discretion of the Chairman or other presiding officer, have charge of the Board chambers, the Board conference room, the waiting areas and corridors adjacent thereto, and the school administration building, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Holloman. Yes?
Good evening, Chairman Byram, Vice Chair Brooks, School Board Members, and Dr. Gordon. Tonight, I'm going to do something different, and instead of giving a speech, I have a series of questions that I would like to pose. Why is Suffolk considering a model that would only have students in school one day a week when the overwhelming majority of school systems in Virginia are looking at a minimum of two days? If you do a one-day-a-week option, does that mean that students will be going to all of their odd and even-day classes in one day? If so, I really hope that that doesn't mean that you're considering anything that would scrap our fine arts programs. With our children's mental health already being pushed to its limits, we really don't want to take the fine arts program from our students, which might be their only outlet of expression. I saw in your slideshow that the Continuity of Learning Plan survey had less than 2,000 responses, 67 being student responses, 3 being my children. I really want to know, do you think that that's a valuable sample size for a survey? Do you really think that utilizing Edge Annuity again is the best path, especially considering the fact that our students know exactly what websites to visit to get the exact answers? They're not learning anything from Edge Annuity. I can tell you from my personal experience with my children that the teachers we had the best experiences with were the arts and resource teachers, like Dr. Jolene Neighbors, Ms. Gwen Chikini, and Mr. Edward Young, who were doing everything via Google Classroom. Anyone who knows me knows my passion for advocating for teachers as well as students, but I want to know what will be done to hold teachers accountable for helping students with virtual learning. In the fourth nine weeks, my three sons had multiple situations where they emailed teachers with questions and received zero feedback, full stop. If we aren't comfortable sending our children to school after you have laid out your final plans, what accommodations will be made for us? If there are none, and you say that our children must attend on the days that you designate, does that mean you're accepting liability for medical bills if our children contract the coronavirus? I saw in your slideshow that you have accommodations listed and being made for staff members with school-aged children. What do you intend to do to accommodate families with parents who are frontline workers, military personnel, or essential employees, especially when those families are both parents working those jobs or the single parent in the household? The military has set forth some very strict guidelines for our active-duty service members. With such a high concentration of military personnel in our city, have you given consideration to the danger you might be placing upon our service members? Do you plan on guaranteeing that all siblings are going to school on the same days? What happens to fire drills, shooter drills, weather drills, evacuation drills? These are done multiple times a month, and they require close proximity. The guidelines recommend keeping doors locked. Will COVID precautions overrule active shooter precautions? Why are students being given an option to wear masks? The CDC says if you can breathe without supplemental oxygen, you can wear a mask. And because the mask protects the mask wearer, or the people from the mask wearer, does that mean that you're saying that our teachers don't need to be protected from the students? Are you putting their safety in jeopardy? How do we make lunch safe when eating opens up the potential for the release of droplets from the mouth if students are required to eat in classrooms? Will they dismiss from the classroom after lunch so that it can be thoroughly cleaned and sanitized? Will we, as parents, be entitled to see a cleaning and sanitizing schedule? What will the protocol be for students who soil their masks? If students are required to stay in the classroom the entire day and not move from class to class, are we then saying that elementary school students will remain seated in desks for six-plus hours a day despite what we know about learning and movement? What proof will any of us have that students returning to school are not living with someone who's positive, an asymptomatic carrier, or currently sick and they're concealing it from the school system? If students pretend to cough or sneeze on a staff member or a student, what will be the disciplinary consequences? If a teacher or their family member gets COVID after returning to work but they had requested to work remotely and were denied, does that mean they can sue you for liability? I could go on like this for hours, but instead, I have left you all with a packet of questions. I would appreciate answers to my questions, and I know a lot of other parents would. Until you can answer all these questions, and many, many, many more, in my opinion and many others, you are not ready to make a decision about opening schools. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ms. Holloman. Next, we have Gregory Casmark. Gregory Casmark?
I'm coming, I'm in overflow. This doesn't count as my five minutes, so. Well, good evenings. Like you said, I'm Greg Casmark. I live in the Booker T. Washington area, and I have a four-year-old and an eight-year-old. And they miss their friends. You know, I agree with a lot of what Ms. Holloman said, but if y'all go down, if you go down on Washington Street and you're over there on Sixth Street and Eighth Street, you see all the kids out there playing. They're all having a wonderful time. I've had friends and neighbors and everybody over at the house, and we maintain, you know, everybody stay clean, we keep our hands clean, you know, and that's what we practice. And I gave you some paperwork this evening of, from the Virginia Hospital and Healthcare Association, and it's from their dashboard. And if we, unfortunately, I didn't know about the dashboard until May. It was shortly after we closed schools. But we can tell that it's a consistent decline in hospitalizations. There's a, you know, if you look at this left column on the paperwork, starting in May, that we started off with 390 people, and I don't want to spend a whole lot of time going over this, but there is a complete steady decline. There's no, you know, we're not overusing ventilators, the availability of ventilators are going up, the bed availability is going up. Everything has stayed steady, and we haven't had a whole lot of, I have, my wife works on the frontline, she's an RN, she's a nurse, she's constantly in the hospital between here and Maryview. You know, there's no influx of hospitalizations, you know, and if you look at it, the cases are going, you know, they're saying, hey, the cases are going up, but they're cases, they're not deaths, they're not hospitalizations. And I just, you know, I want to commend, like Ms. Holloman, I believe her name, said, you know, some teachers did a fantastic job at remote learning, but both my wife and me are full-time working parents. I work on the federal side, and she's an RN, and I have not missed a single day of work since this. And when we were doing the remote learning, I had to visit my children in the conference room. I'll remind you, one's a four-year-old that needs speech therapy, and one's an eight-year-old. And trying to keep them focused in a remote meeting, you know, one of the teachers was great, and like she was saying, she didn't get responses from, but Mrs. Dawn was fabulous. She did it every day, she was to the T, she always sent the paperwork, she always sent, you know, the learning. Actually, we're in July, and just the other day, she sent more interactive learning material for us. And she was actually the Teacher of the Year over at Booker T. Washington, and I think that the teachers also deserve another year of Teacher of the Year, because they got short-changed too. But they go through a lot of work, you know, but both of my parents are retired teachers, you know, and that's a lot of work to go through, you know. So I'd like some of those answers too, but I would please if y'all could just really look into getting these schools open so that these kids can get back together, you know. They need, they need, she was talking about their mental health. They need it for their mental health as well, you know. We don't have to make, you know, we can make exceptions, you know, if you go to the bank or you go to the grocery store, they have Plexiglas in front of you, even though they scan all your items, you know, you still are behind a piece of Plexiglas. If we can make accommodations for these teachers, because we know the kids are pretty much okay with the COVID-19 thing, but, you know, there's some teachers that may be more susceptible to, you know, getting COVID-19, and if they stay behind their desk or if they get the paperwork, you know, before they come into class, I just think it's very important that our children, and if we look at Moving Forward Virginia, that was released July 6th, you know, they were saying, you know, social distance if possible, you know, but I think we're on a downward, I think COVID's, you know, becoming manageable, and if you look at that paperwork, I mean, I know it looks like just a bunch of numbers, but if you really look at that paperwork that I just gave you from the Virginia Hospital Association, all those numbers are declining, and all the availability of everything is going up. And I also have, like I said, my wife's a frontline worker at Maryview Hospital with the dialysis patient, and, you know, she does suit up and, you know, do all that, but there hadn't been a whole lot of things. And I want to thank y'all for doing, you know, it's hard for everybody to get through this, y'all have been doing a wonderful job as well. And last meeting, Dr. Gordon was talking about how many lunches and everything that y'all have continued to serve, and, you know, I really appreciate y'all hanging in there and still showing up and still, you know, making the meetings and doing everything that you can do to get our children, you know, at least, I mean, you know, at least a couple days, three days a week, maybe. I mean, I know 41% of that survey that she was, you know, were saying at least one day a week, but that, you know, there's 14,000-some children in Suffolk Public Schools, and we only had about a 4,000 people response on that survey, so I don't know, maybe if we could send out another survey as well, but, you know, the kids, I just would really, really enjoy to see my kids back in the schools, walking down the hallways.
Mr. K. Mars, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you. Y'all have a good evening. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. K. Next, we have Melissa Venable.
Ms. Venable isn't here. I have a letter from Ms. Venable.
Yes.
Dear School Board members, unfortunately, I will be out of town this week with my family and will not be able to attend the meeting to be held on July 9, 2020. I'm very concerned about our students not being back in school in September or only going to school one day per week. How are working parents expected to thrive? How are we expected to teach our elementary-age students while working? Your answer thus far is to use daycare. Therefore, we are pushing the problem from the schools to a daycare system. This makes little sense to me. Our children need to be in school. The long-term ramifications are too devastating to our society and to our children. We are being driven by fear of illness, but we are not considering the fear of job loss, financial ruin, long-term effects of our children from neglect, or even worse. I would like you to please consider children being back in school, if not only five days per week, at least two to three days per week. I would like you to rely on parents to do what is good and correct. Our children can wear masks. Our parents can, our parents and caregivers can know when to keep their child home due to illness. Our parents that are able can drive their child to school if the bus system is too overwhelmed. Our parents can help if you allow us to do so. Please do not, please do no cause, please do not cause us to find other education systems. Please allow my children to stay in public school where they can learn to love, respect, and cherish each other. I hate to think of the future issues we cause when our children are not being educated by our great teachers that love and cherish them. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Next, we have Paige Cluck.
Good evening. My name is Paige Cluck, and I reside in the Kings Fork area. I am the mother of six children, four of which have already graduated from Suffolk Public Schools, a senior and a freshman. I would first like to thank the board and administration for being proactive in providing a means for our students to finish out the school year with a systematic learning plan. However, I'm not sure if all the lessons learned were the lessons intended. My children worked diligently to complete 100% of the work several weeks prior to the due date, because they want to start their summer early, to only learn that 70% effort holds the same value as 100% of it. If a contractor does 70% of the work, are you going to give him 100% of the pay? You have set a precedent that you will give in on your standards. How much work will my children have to do in the fall to receive an A? I hope that the committees that were formed, which I'd like to have been a part of, would have considered the input of the surveys and making recommendations for the upcoming year, but I see that did not happen. If so, edgenuity would not have been the suggested format for middle and high school students. If you are truly here for the students, their opinion would matter the most. Most question, my main question is, how did the 67 students that completed the survey know to do so? Neither of my children received an email about completing a survey or were contacted for their comments. Not sure how they were responded when they were able to successfully complete the 100% of the work, one with little help from me, but one with an extremely large amount of help from me. Luckily, I was able to be home and help, but I have to admit, there were plenty of answers I Googled and looked up on Quizlet. I hope that when you're considering a final plan, that you put yourself in the position of a parent trying to help their child manage an educational program that they did not choose for them, or in the shoes of a student who has already said edgenuity is not the way they learn, or in the minds of a special education child that needs repeated instructions, needs that redirection, and needs daily teacher support. Do the benefits of attending school one day a week outweigh the logistics of getting the students to school, taking their temperatures, getting them to a classroom, feeding them twice a day, letting them use the restroom several times a day, and also try to educate them? Excuse me. What kind of support will my children receive on the other three or four days? Does this mean that my children will have two teachers for every subject, an in-person teacher and an online teacher? And if so, will both teachers be assigning work? How will my special education child receive the appropriate amount of support he should receive? Will he have an in-school special ed teacher and an online special ed teacher? If students are allowed to attend school, you must make it mandatory that they wear masks. Masks are meant to protect others. Children may not be affected at the same rates as adults, but they could be carriers. I do not want my high school children exposed to other children that are unmasked. How do we assure that students are not coming to school sick? And what happens if their teacher, a student, a student's family member becomes infected? Will everyone exposed have to be quarantined? Who will then teach my child's class if the teacher has to go out? Edgenuity seems like an easy fix, but it isn't. I ask you, have you ever sat through a 15-minute world geography video in which a teacher is reading a script of factual information with little or no expression? I ask, have you ever tried to complete a lesson in which edgenuity says it should take 20 minutes to then have 10 written response questions that you have to research the information to answer because the content was not in the 15-minute video that you rewatched trying to find the answer? I ask, have you had to sit with a dyslexic child that has trouble reading, comprehending, and spelling, and review content that you are not familiar with in order to keep him from giving up? I guess probably not, or you, as a parent or grandparent, would understand that edgenuity is not the answer. What is the answer? I am not 100% certain, but as a parent, I would like my children to have a daily, have daily contact with their teachers. I would like instruction from a teacher and not a program that is not aligned to our curriculum. I would like my students to continue to grow academically in a manner that will prepare them for college and the military. I have plenty more I could say. Prior to the meeting tonight, I did email this to all of you, and I welcome any of you to reach out.
Thank you, Ms. Cluck. Your time has expired.
And contact me if you have any other information, need any other information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cluck. Now, we have reports by the superintendent, Dr. Gordon.
Yes, ma'am. We'll call Ms. Ward to the podium to do the first aspects of the reports from the superintendent. Ms. Ward?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. For tonight's Good News Report, we want to take the time to share several highlights from our school division that have occurred during the past month. Many of you may have seen photos and flashbacks of some of your favorite memories from the 2019-2020 school year, prior to COVID, of course. These posts on our social media platforms are part of our Remember When series, spearheaded by our new social media specialist, Pam Workman. To keep our school community engaged during the summer months, we have encouraged our staff and members of the community to submit these photos and videos as a fun way to stay connected with Suffolk Public Schools. Here, you can see two photos from the series that were shared previously when Mrs. Zawadny dressed as Mrs. Frizzle and encouraged her students to take chances and get messy while learning at Macbin Junior Elementary, and when Shilia Tolliver performed an original poem onstage at Chrysler Hall. On June 20th, Suffolk Public Schools held a virtual graduation ceremony where graduates had a chance to hear from several speakers, including our school board chair and the superintendent, along with their school's principal, valedictorian, and salutatorian. In addition to honor our senior graduating class of 2020, Kings Fork, Lakeland, and Nansman River held a drive-through send-off. We look forward to seeing all of the great things our graduates accomplish in the future. Speaking of graduates, we'd like to take a moment to recognize a Kings Fork High School IB alumni and member of the Suffolk Public Schools graduating class of 2017, Ms. Alana Tillery. Alana is currently a rising senior bioengineering student at the University of Maryland College Park, who was recently named the Philip Merrill Presidential Scholar. The Presidential Scholars Program honors the University of Maryland's most successful seniors, their designated university faculty, and K-12 teachers for their mentorship. In a recent University of Maryland article, Alana recognized her favorite teacher, Mr. William Ford, at Kings Fork High. What an amazing win for teachers that goes to show the impact that the great teachers in our division has on our students. This past spring semester, Alana also received the Outstanding Junior Award and the Extraordinary Service Award for Leadership and Volunteerism during COVID-19. She became an asset to the testing site personnel as a translator and says that the Spanish she learned in high school helped her to better serve the Hispanic population in the community. She is a true leader in service and outreach. After graduation, Alana will pursue a Doctorate of Medicine in Clinical Neural Engineering. So certainly, congratulations to Alana on a job well done and for representing Suffolk Public Schools in the best light. Congratulations as well to Elephants Fork Elementary School, Lakeland High School, Kings Fork High School, Kings Fork Middle School, Nansman River High School, and Nansman Parkway Elementary on receiving the 2020 Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. Schools recognized for continuous improvement were rated accredited or accredited with conditions for the 2019-2020 school year and met at least one of the following four criteria based on performance during the 2018-2019 school year. A 10-point increase in the combined rate in reading and math and in the pass rate in science, a 10-point increase in the combined rate in reading and math for two or more student groups across three years, a decrease in the chronic absenteeism rate for three years, or for schools with a graduating class, an increase in the graduation and completion index, and a decrease in the dropout rate for three years. At this time, we ask the following principals to come forward to accept the award for each Douglas Wagner, on behalf of Lakeland High School. Sean Green, on behalf of Nansman River High School. And of course, we still want to acknowledge Principal Dan O'Leary. We are sure that he's going to do great things over at Colonel Fred Cherry Middle. Next, we have Jennifer Presson, on behalf of Kings Fork Middle. And lastly, we have Jessica Avery, on behalf of Elephants Fork Elementary. Thank you. As a part of our Good News Report, it's not listed on the slide, but I want to bring your attention to an article that was published in the Suffolk News Herald on June 20th titled "Young Citizen Inspires Us." The article is about an eight-year-old student who attends Macbin Junior Elementary, Aubrey Freeman. The name may sound familiar to you, as Aubrey held a lemonade stand in the community last year. This year, she held a food drive to help feed the homeless. Aubrey set up a tent at the end of the driveway to practice social distancing, of course, and people pulled up to make donations. In return, she offered them homemade cookies and banana pudding. Aubrey collected more than 300 food items, along with clothes and monetary donations, which she plans to deliver to the local homeless shelter. The quote included in the article comes directly from Aubrey and reads, "I want to help the homeless as much as I can. I just don't want them to have to go around begging for food and stuff." Thank you, Aubrey, for exemplifying the love and kindness that we have in our schools and in our community, and for sharing a lesson about care and compassion that we all can use, no matter what age we are or what background we come from. At this time, I'll pass things back over to Dr. Gordon to discuss the Kings Fork Basketball Tournament.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, and again, congratulations to all of our principals. That's what instructional leadership is all about. Kings Fork High School is actually becoming recognized as a national high school basketball power, and have been invited to participate in the Culligan City of Palms Classic in Palm Beach, Florida on December 8th through December 23rd. This tournament has had 16 state or national champions from across the country. This is going to be a great exposure event for our student athletes that will have missed some opportunities from the lack of an AAU basketball season this summer. This tournament has produced 71 McDonald's All-Americans in the past eight years, and has also included eight number-one or two picks in the NBA draft. This is such a great opportunity for our students, and will be an experience that they will cherish for the rest of their lives. Good luck to Coach Height and the Kings Fork High School Bulldogs, as we know, they will represent Suffolk Public Schools well. Thank you.
Next, we have Special Education Advisory Committee Annual Report. Leslie Schepel, right?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Gordon. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Special Education Advisory Committee Annual Report for the 2019-2020 school year. It is mandated by the state that each school division in the Commonwealth have a local advisory committee for special education, otherwise known as SEAC. The purpose of our SEAC is to advise Suffolk Public Schools of the needs and the education of children with disabilities, participate in the development of priorities and strategies for meeting identified needs, submit periodic reports and recommendations regarding the education of children with disabilities, assist Suffolk Public Schools in interpreting plans to the community for meeting special needs of children with disabilities for educational services, review the policies and procedures for the provision of special education and related services, and participate in the review of Suffolk Public Schools annual As is mandated by the state SEAC, our voting membership consists of a majority of parents of students with disabilities currently and formerly receiving services in our division. We have one teacher voting member. Our consultants include the director and supervisors of special education, the parent resource center facilitator, and a school board liaison. Our committee is governed by bylaws that were last revised in December of 2009. Subcommittee- Subcommittees are assigned as needed to address our goals. Our 2019-20 goals focused on disability awareness, transition, data and assessments, transportation, communication, and resources. The committee meets six times a year on the third Wednesday bimonthly. Our meetings are held at Kings Fork Middle School from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM, and they are open to the public. They are advertised on the Suffolk Public Schools' website, the CX Facebook page, and every school throughout the city via Peachjar and in community spaces such as public libraries. Our subcommittees meet as needed. A period of time is allotted for public comment and subsequent review during each scheduled meeting of the full committee. There was one public comment given this term. The committee is tasked with raising public awareness of the impact of disabilities and resources available to assist parents and students. Beginning in October, which is Disability History and Awareness Month in Virginia, members of SEAC helped implement disability awareness activities in schools. The committee also provides parents with an understanding of the functions of the local advisory committee. Members attended school board meetings and other Suffolk Public School events to provide opportunities to discuss SEAC. SEAC also cosponsored the Disability Awareness Fair on November 15, 2019. Disability awareness will be a continuing goal. The Little Feet Meet is an event for elementary students receiving self-contained services. It is cosponsored by SEAC and the Special Olympics of Virginia. The event was scheduled for March 27, 2020. Unfortunately, the event was canceled this year due to COVID-19. The committee monitors secondary transition services as budget constraints have severely impacted these services. Starting at age 14, transition services are addressed on the IEP. However, the committee recommends discussion of transition opportunities and resources prior to the age of 14. Transition will be a continuing goal. SEAC monitors testing and data assessments that impact students receiving special education services in Suffolk Public Schools. We review graduation and/or exit data and discuss accreditation issues within the district. The committee is committed to assessing data on students found ineligible for services, and this will be a continuing goal. The committee works on improving transportation for students with special needs. The committee will continue to advocate for a bus aid on every special needs bus due to safety concerns. Transportation will be a continuing goal. The committee discussed methods to improve communication between parents of students receiving special education services and the schools. We will continue to expand SEAC's presence on Facebook to allow for better communication with our stakeholders. We will continue to work with Suffolk Public Schools to improve the availability of the SEAC brochure in schools and to our stakeholders. This will be a continuing goal. The committee endeavors to improve resources available to parents of students receiving special education services. Our committee will continue to recommend new materials for the Parent Resource Center. We are committed to help plan, develop, and implement understanding special education courses for parents, school administrators, and teachers. This will be a continuing goal. Each year, SEAC reviews Suffolk's proposed budget for the next school year to consider any impact on special education services. While the decline in funding for certain special education services over the last several years continues to be a concern to this committee, no public comment to the board was made this At this point in the presentation, I would usually be introducing the SEAC voting members for the next academic year. However, due to changes in policy enacted by this board in November of 2019, the voting members of SEAC will now be selected by the school board. Hopefully, the new members will be announced by the school board during this meeting tonight. It has been my pleasure to present this report tonight. I will be cycling off of the committee after the July SEAC meeting next week due to the committee term limits. I would like to thank all of the voting members of SEAC who served during this past year. It has been a challenging few months for everyone. We were required to transition to virtual meetings after our January meeting due to COVID-19. We also had to revamp all of our committee goals because of the school closure. It made it impossible to work on the goals that we had developed in the fall. This year has also brought about some unwelcome changes in the way our committee membership will be selected from here on out. It is still this committee's consensus that having the voting members handpicked by the school board will weaken this committee significantly. Our members agree that requiring a letter of interest to become a member of SEAC will ultimately prove to be a detriment to the membership of the committee going forward. Also, it is with great sadness that I announce tonight that SEAC is losing a very valuable member of the committee. Vivian Evatt has decided to hang up her SEAC hat permanently. Vivian has been an integral part of SEAC for many, many years. She has served in all capacities during her years on the committee, including SEAC chairperson for multiple years. She has been my mentor for the last 10 years. Her knowledge of special education and her personal experiences as an advocate for her own children have been invaluable to SEAC over the years. We will miss Vivian greatly and wish her the very best in her future endeavors. Thank you again for the opportunity to present this report, and with that, I will be happy to answer your questions.
I want to thank you personally, Ms. Schaefer. I've seen you many times, and I know you've been very active with SEAC as well as Ms. Evatt, and I know you have contributed a lot and helped a lot of our students. I hope you'll keep abreast of what's going on, and when you can, you will volunteer and help, and we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Next, we have Suffolk Public Schools' Response Plan Update. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to move to the podium for this part of the meeting. So today's report from the superintendent on the SBS response plan is going to be a little different. I want to take the time to provide both the Suffolk Public Schools' school board and our school community insight into the plans for the school division for the remainder of the summer and leading up to the start of our school year on September 8, 2020. Now, as you all remember, the last time I came to you before at the podium was during budget season, so I really want you all to understand the importance of some of the things I'm about to say. Later this evening, you will hear from Dr. Suzanne Rice, Chief of Administrative Services, on our progress and return to our school plan. You will hear from Dr. Davenport, Director of Curriculum Instruction, on our new learning management system, Canvas. I want to reiterate that the plan that we are introducing tonight will not be the same plan that we used during our virtual SBS model that was used in the fourth nine weeks of the 2019-2020 school year. These are different circumstances, and the school division has had more time to prepare, time to address community concerns, and has required additional professional learning from staff to improve their ability to become virtual instructors. I want to be very clear here. Parents will not be responsible for the instruction of our students, but will need to partner with students and schools in order for learning to be effective. We also have been very diligent in thinking about childcare and how we can support our staff, our students, and our school community. I also want to state publicly that the plan is fluid. The Fall Learning Plan is not 100% complete, as we still have to discuss options with our students and finalize some logistics. Parents and students will have two options that Dr. Rice will discuss. Now, contrary to other misinformation that is out there, Suffolk Public Schools was always going to give our parents and students a choice. I hinted at this during my Facebook Live sessions, but we also want to give our families some time to prepare, which is why this is a two-part process. It is our goal to present our train of thought tonight and then have the school board take action on the final version at the August school board meeting. Regardless of the options that will be discussed, we are going to make our decision based on the student and staff's safety first and then instructional needs. All superintendents across the Commonwealth of Virginia have received letters and emails that attempted to apply political pressure to school division decisions. We are not going to put our school community at risk due to what is convenient. Suffolk Public Schools will follow CDC guidelines. We have worked very closely with our health partners to come up with a plan that will keep our students and staff safe and to assist in being preventative in the spreading of COVID-19. We fully agree that we all want our students to be back in school every day, but we need to prepare ourselves for a different reality if need be. Even with Governor Northern moving Virginia to Phase 3, social distancing, limited group and class sizes, and cleaning and disinfection procedures will still be in place. We are not back to normal just yet, and it will take some time for Suffolk Public Schools to adjust to new protocols, including how students learn and interact with each other. This will require empathy. This will require teamwork. This will require true communication. It will be our goal to post on our website and other outlets our health plan, instruction plan, and overall return-to-school plan. We are also going to provide videos and other information to our parents and school community so that you can be more familiar with our hybrid learning model, the expectations of the student and teacher, and the expectation of the parent. We are working on our plan to provide childcare to support our families if our students are not in school every day. All of you have heard me discuss the vision for building the best SBS. We have already made significant changes in our instructional model with the SBS Connect Initiative, which will be pre-K through 12 next year, our Nike BSN Sports deal, and our new instructional innovation plans, and a brand-new branding and marketing strategy that we're going to announce to you all next month. Suffolk Public Schools will become more innovative, as we are going to tap into student creativity a lot more and develop a teaching and learning plan that spirals instruction that may have been lost at the end of last school year into our pacing guides and curriculum maps for this school year. But here, school community, is where we need your help. We need for our school community to be positive and work with the school division. I have personally seen too many issues that relate to a lack of trust. We have hired staff that we trust will be outstanding educators for your students. The school board hired me nine months ago to make Suffolk Public Schools the best division in the world. We trust that our parents and guardians will collaborate with the school division to better serve the students. We will team with our constituents to move all students forward and not a select few. We are asking our teachers and staff to become Google-certified, to actively participate in professional learning that is centered around culturally relevant instruction, equity, and social-emotional learning. This expectation is non-negotiable. Like many school divisions, Suffolk Public Schools has had the same challenges for years. So now, we're going to do something different. I honestly believe that we have the ability, in the largest city in the Commonwealth of Virginia, to get it right, to put politics aside, to put socioeconomic status aside, and to acknowledge the mistakes of the past, and to finally put kids first. The students are going to need our help. It is all of our responsibilities to help them. Together, we are going to build the next generation of shining stars for Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we have calendar of special events.
Yes, that's me, too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's right.
So this is National Parks and Recreation Month for the entire month of July 2020. As we all know, we celebrated Independence Day, and Suffolk Public Schools was closed on July 2nd and 3rd. We really wanted to give our staff an elongated weekend, and one of the things, even though the SAO is open for business 50% of the time and staff is teleworking 50% of the time, our schools, you heard about several of our administrators that were here today, have been open every day. They're literally working 12 and 13 and 14 hours. I mean, I've seen the communication from so many dedicated leaders and workers here in Suffolk Public Schools that when COVID hit March 13th, they actually went into overdrive, and they've been doing that ever since. And so we really wanted to make sure that they took some time to relax, and it was hard, because a lot of them were still sending me emails on Friday, July 3rd. The Suffolk City Council Work Session is at July 15 at 4 o'clock PM, and our next board meeting, Madam Chair, is August 13th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. You'll look at that, please. This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I have one question.
Yes.
About Item 3, the field trip. I want to say this, and I am extremely proud of our student athletes, and in the eight years that I've been here, whenever our students were selected to do anything, I not only supported them, I took a check to help them get to wherever they were going. I am concerned about Florida being a COVID hotspot, and I am concerned about our teams going anywhere where it is a COVID hotspot, and Florida hasn't really behaved like a state so far that is careful with our students. I read carefully the conditions for withdrawing from this tournament, and it's thousands of dollars if you do withdraw from the tournament, at least from what I read. What are our plans? Because these people in Florida so far have moved forward with some things that I find very questionable. What happens if we feel that this is something that would be dangerous for our students and we decide whether they go with it or not, that we're not sending our kids there?
So, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, I've asked Dr. Lee, our Director of Secondary Leadership, to address these very legitimate concerns from Dr. Buck. So, Dr. Lee?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and School Board Members. Those same concerns concern myself and the principal at Kings Fork as well. The gentleman, and we reached out to Mr. Donnie Wilkie, he's the vice president of this tournament. He has sent to me an email, and it's not just Kings Fork, it will go out to all of the schools, that if, in fact, our school board says that they deem it not safe to go, or if Florida deems it not safe for kids to travel there, we would not be charged the $5,000.
Oh, okay.
Part of it is that the travel expenses and the meal expenses are being paid because this is an invitational. But certainly, we shared those concerns as well, that that is a hefty, that's a hefty fee.
I looked at that.
But we do have in writing from the chairman of that committee that if, in fact, they cancel it, or if our school board or our school says it is too dangerous for us to travel, we would not go and we would not be charged the $5,000.
Okay, okay. That was my only concern. I'm hoping by December, things change, but that was my concern. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, a question regarding that. What is the deadline for the board to make that determination?
I don't think that there is a deadline, not in the contract that was shared with us. However, that's something that we can certainly talk about, and we can ask them, what is that deadline? I would personally think we would know before December whether we were going to go or not. I don't think it's gonna, it's either gonna be too bad for us to go or it's not, but I can certainly ask what that deadline would be.
My reasons for asking, because when speaking in regards to COVID-19, everything could be going well, September, October, but then November, you have a surge or a significant spike that just comes up, like some of our numbers that we've seen in certain areas. At that point, would it be too late? That's where I'm at. You know, I'm all for Kings Fork High School getting this exposure, but I just want to make sure that we are not saying, yes, then the deadline is August to pull out and something happens in November.
And I will be in communication with the committee chairman this week, actually. That is a good, that's a good question, and it's something that I will ask. Again, with the situation with COVID-19, it is fluid. I mean, we don't really know, but what... I mean, we don't really know, but what we have been assured is that at any point, if, you know, we say it's too dangerous, but I will get a hard deadline, because I think that's what you're asking, can we get a hard deadline when we say this is where we are? The team plans to fly, and so obviously, you know, that's another consideration as well, and that we need to know about that, what the deadline is for that, what potential flight. So, I will get a hard deadline.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Lee. Thank you. Looking at the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, could we group the consent agenda together and approve it all at once?
Yes, that's what.
Okay. Madam Chair, move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second. Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick? Board Member Mittnick? I can't make out what he said.
This is Michael. Is he muted?
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on, unfinished business. We have none tonight. Under new business, we have the Suffolk Public Schools Fall Response Plan. Dr. Gordon and Dr. Rice, I believe.
Yes, ma'am. As Dr. Rice makes her way up, our Chief of Administrative Services, she's going to provide an overview for the board on our train of thought, as we want to give our families some time to prepare, as I stated in my remarks. This will also partner with Item Number 2, the Virtual Virginia and Canvas Learning Management System, which will be presented by Dr. Davenport. So, Dr. Rice?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gordon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board members. I cannot emphasize enough that anything short of sending our students back five days a week is going to be ideal. We all understand that. We all want to get back to normal as soon as possible, but we do need to keep the safety of our students and staff foremost in our minds of how we're making these plans. And talking about the fluidity of the COVID virus and how it's changing on a regular basis, I just brought two prime examples of my beloved Virginian pilot. You know, yesterday, we see on top of the headlines that Virginia has now changed their social guidance, you know, their social distancing guidance from six feet to three feet. And so that's news as of yesterday. And then today, at the top of the paper, it says that there's a spike in Hampton Roads. And so every day, we're monitoring what's happening with CDC and the Virginia Department of Health, and it really has, you know, helped steer us in the right direction for safety of our students and staff, which, again, is a goal. So to start with, I want to just show you the overall core task force that we had. As you can see, most of these folks are members of the superintendent's cabinet, but we also had to add some important folks here, such as Ms. Williford, who is with Health Services there. Ms. Young is Transportation Director, and then Ms. Christine Lafferty works with our scheduling and master scheduling, and she's going to be key to how we roll this all out in the end. We did have some goals in mind when we started this process. One, as I mentioned earlier, is the fact that we have to ensure the health and safety of all students and staff. That has to be our number-one priority. Number two, we wanted to make sure that we did have some high-quality, meaningful instruction, and we did want to make sure that there was equity, equity with access. And so, you know, I hope to be able to answer a lot of those questions that many of those speakers had earlier tonight through this presentation. And I will say the caveat right now, that this presentation had to be presented two weeks prior to this meeting, so things have changed since then. And as Dr. Gordon mentioned, there will be some changes in the final outcome of what it will look like in the fall and when we present it to you in August, although we can't make promises that things won't change from August to September as well. The third goal that we had was to provide students and staff with some social-emotional supports. We recognize that this has to be a priority. This has been a very stressful time for all of us. We recognize that, and so we want to be able to support both students and staff when we return. And then the fourth goal may not seem that important, but what's going to happen is, once we get this modified platform, when we roll out into the fall, we want to make sure that when we do return to normal, whether it's at the end of that first nine weeks, whether it's at the end of the semester, or however long it lasts, we really want to make sure that it becomes a seamless transition so we don't have to redo schedules all over again. And so that's why that had to be a goal of ours, is to make sure that we could keep this pretty seamless. So here are those results of the Continuity of Learning Survey from all of the stakeholders. You can see parents, staff, students. Right here just gives you an idea of who participated. We did have a little over 1,900 participants. You can see the percentage of whether they participated in the mastery, which was the elementary version, the virtual, which was secondary, both or neither. This gives you an idea of the satisfaction, the level of satisfaction. You can see, if you look at the satisfied versus the dissatisfied, in a lot of cases, it's about 50/50, but there were some differences there. For example, it seems to be that the Google Classroom seemed to be more satisfying, if you will, especially for students. But they're still going to be different, and Dr. Lawson Davenport is going to explain a little more to you that, for example, Edgenuity is not going to be the primary virtual platform. This is just a graphic showing you at a glance all of those results for satisfaction. Again, the blue would be what was satisfied, gray's neutral, and then the gold just shows you the dissatisfied. All of these results, by the way, have been looked at by the Teaching and Learning Team, and that they are using that as we are putting together plans for how the fall will look We also allowed for some individual remarks, and the comments are kind of grouped positive and negative, and we lumped them into the three most popular, if you will, of each. The first positive response that we got basically was thanking us for making the quick turnaround. I mean, things happened so quickly, March 13th, schools are shut. What are we going to do? How quickly can we get this rolling? And as Dr. Gordon alluded earlier, the staff, you know, boots on the ground, we hit it running and came up with a plan very quickly, very little time. And so Edgenuity happened to be a platform we had available. Let's use that for those secondary kids that had the Chromebooks accessible to them. They also appreciated the input, although it didn't appear that we had a high number of parent, or excuse me, survey responses. They did appreciate the fact that we were reaching out to them. And then a few of them actually pointed out teachers that went above and beyond what they're doing for their students. It wasn't just lessons, it was reaching out to families via email, phone calls, additional Zoom conferencing with the kids. And as a matter of fact, I just spoke to a parent yesterday who said that her child's teacher is still reaching out during the summer to make sure that her child is doing well. So kudos to all of those teachers that are going above and beyond. Then on the negative side, I think most of us can agree that the top two were Edgenuity. We knew that we figured out that there was too many, that it took too long to go through those Edgenuity lessons, those modules were just too difficult to complete. We also had technical difficulty with those that were kind of beyond our control as far as the audio and video feeds. And again, I want to reiterate that that will not be the primary platform when we move forward in the fall, that will just be supplemental. And then the inconsistent teacher-staff engagement, that was a real problem for us, and we recognize that, and that is going to be something that's going to be addressed. We are going to come up with a matter of monitoring this. It would be a very systematic way that we ensure that there's not only the student engagement, but that the teachers are following through as we have asked them to do. All right, so this is sort of chronological, if you will, what the process is looking like. Once we realized, probably back in May, that we were going to have to start thinking about some plans in the fall, this is before Virginia came up with anything, we knew we had to go with safety first, and so the CDC, that's what we had to go with, the Centers for Disease Control. They were early on, it was in May, I believe, that they put out some sort of guidelines for the schools, and so we immediately pulled that together so we could go over all of that. We also decided we could glean ideas from other school divisions in other states. California, for example, put out a plan pretty early, pulled that plan out so we could see what their ideas were. Maryland was another state that put out a plan pretty early. We wanted to look at those, what were other states and divisions doing? Transportation limitations, we knew was going to be a driver. This kind of goes back to the equity piece. We have to make sure that we are giving anybody that's going to be face-to-face instruction the access to get to school for that. And so therefore, we can't rely on all parents to transport their children because they can't. We recognize that. So looking at the limitations, with transportation had to be a driver. So I'll just leave it at that until I get to the transportation part. Also, we had to calculate classroom capacity. We wanted to keep that safe distancing in the classrooms. Not all of our classrooms are the same sizes and shapes, and so we had to work on matrices on how to get the configurations set up inside those classrooms. Finally, Virginia came out with some guidelines in early June, and that's really what we were waiting for, although it wasn't a whole lot different, but they partnered with the Department of, Virginia Department of Health, and so we were able to then create some task force teams. One was for operations and logistics. We have one for instruction and one for social, emotional, emotional, and mental health. We got those teams together very quickly because we wanted to come up with some ideas that we could put immediately into a survey for parents, because we did want that parent feedback on some options. I can tell you further down through this presentation, those options are going to change and look a little different, but we had to have something out for parents to give us some feedback. We also needed to survey our staff, how many of our staff members are going to be able to return to work in the fall, which are at risk, who are at risk and who can come back safely. We are continuing to work with that, those numbers right now. Again, the priorities that we had with working with safety and following the CDC and VDH guidelines, buses, we recommended one per seat, every other seat. I can tell you, Mr. Riddick shaking his head laughing, he knows, that's 12 students per bus, per run. We run 64 and 77 passenger buses. Ladies and gentlemen, that's a drastic change in capacity. And so that, again, thinking about equity, we had to consider if we're going to be transporting roughly the same amount of students that we already transport, which is about 83% of our student population, moving to 12 at a time is very difficult to get students to school. Classrooms, we had to make sure we did have the space to keep those desks six feet apart and all facing the same direction. And then face masks, of course, again, these are the guidelines that were given to us from CDC and VDH, should be required mandatory for our employees and visitors coming into the building, and highly encouraged for students. And the caveat to go with that is because those face masks have to be age-appropriate. And you know that we do have three- and four- five- six- seven- eight-year-olds that are going to have some difficulty wearing masks and keeping them on all day long. So those were the difficulties that one of the task force teams is still wrestling with on what to do about the masks with the younger students. Some other priorities that we had to look at are the common areas, so they're going to change. We have to, you know, look at how we use these a little bit differently. For example, cafeterias, we're not going to have mass groups of people in there eating breakfast and lunch. Hallways, we're probably going to have to start moving directional arrows all the way throughout the building. There are going to be one-way hallways, one-way passageways, so that folks don't pass each other. We're going to have to mark off the six-feet distancing so that people know where to stop, where to stand, so that they don't get too close to each other. We'll have signage all over the buildings as well. Cleaning and disinfecting, we had to reexamine how we're doing that. We have to make sure that they are thoroughly cleaned, once students leave an area and once they, before they return. This also includes buses between runs. We're going to have to be able to do that. So once we drop some middle school students off, thoroughly disinfect that bus before we can roll out and pick up the high school students. And then, of course, we want to reevaluate these plans come October 2nd or November, so probably about a nine-weeks period. We want to see, A, how we're doing with what we've proposed for the fall, but we also want to see where we are in the state. As mentioned by Dr. Brooks Buck, the state of Florida, for example, is moving backwards. The state of Texas, for example, is moving backwards. Right now, we're in Phase 3 in Virginia, but we don't know what's going to happen in September. And so if we happen to move backwards into Phase 1, that changes everything for us, because, again, we're looking at safety. Task Force Team 1, the operations and logistics, you can see the members of that team right here. The co-chairs were Mr. Littlefield and Mr. Napier. We had SAO members, administrators, parents, and teachers on this committee. They were tasked with numerous things, and these are just some of the things that they were tasked with. They wanted to make sure that we had an adequate inventory of personal protection equipment and cleaning supplies in every location. They had to address, and they are currently doing that, making sure that we have a plan to address whenever we get positive cases in our schools. And it's a flow chart exactly what should happen, and we have involved the local Department of Health with that, the Western Tijuana Department of Health. We have to create isolation rooms in all of our schools for these positive cases. These isolation rooms cannot be the clinics, because the clinics need to be used for regular health reasons, not COVID cases. And so we're in the process of working on that. Hygiene procedures and physical distancing are going to be stressed. We have signage all over the buildings. It's going to be focused on three W's, if you will. Wait or walk six feet apart, wash your hands frequently, and wear a face covering. So again, the three W's. Cleaning schedules and procedures and the training that went along with that, Mr. Napier's department has worked very diligently in creating a very thorough cleaning plan that's going to be posted on our website soon and also submitted to the DOE. But in this plan, what we had to make sure is it's fully described as what gets cleaned, when does it get cleaned, how does it get cleaned? It's very, very thorough and very detailed. Food services, you know, we're going to have to rethink what we're doing right now. All summer long, well, back since March, we have been delivering thousands and thousands of meals to our families across the city. That may look a little different now because we need our buses to transport our students. It may be that we do it in between morning and afternoon runs. It may be that we have satellite locations. That's going to look a little different, and we're working on that right now. Childcare, as was mentioned, we were working on making some childcare available, and we did have a priority, wanting to make sure that it was for our SPS staff so that we could ensure they were in schools to keep our schools fully staffed. Staffing is what they're looking at as well with HR, making sure that we have adequate staff that can return to the buildings safely. And then communication, Ms. Ward's department is going to be critical in making sure that we engage not only all of our families, but make sure we're putting out the information in any training or whatever opportunities we can put out there to make sure that everybody's educated and fully understands what we're doing every step of the way. After a meeting for the last month and a half or so, these are some recommendations. Again, this is from two weeks ago when this was put together, so they've since met, and that these will be tweaked a little bit. But so far, the recommendations at that point were to make sure we provided barriers for all front office counters and cafeteria cash register areas. For the most part, I think that has been accomplished. They were looking at recommending, you know, the transportation of a 25% capacity. I will show you those numbers in just a moment. They were saying that we want face coverings mandatory for staff and highly recommend it for students. And then, of course, to increase the cleaning and sanitizing procedures, which we're already doing, and then the screening protocols, making sure that we have those defined very clearly. Task Force 2 is the instructional team. Ms. Connor and Dr. Lee are the co-chairs here. We have the other SAO members, principals, parents, and teachers on this committee. They were tasked with quite a few things as well, first being that they did review that continuity of learning feedback to make sure that we don't make the same mistakes, make sure we go through and do it better this time. And the good news is that we have a lot more time to plan for it than we did in March. They're also going to be planning for the instructional models and platforms that we'll be using. The big piece here will be scheduling. That's going to be a big task. They're going to assist the principals in making sure that we get the students scheduled appropriately, and that will go along also with bus routes. They're also going to have to look at scheduling the professional learning for our teachers. A lot of it did take place this past spring before school closed with the furthering of Google certification among staff, but there will be a lot more to come, I imagine, with Canvas. And again, Dr. Lawson Davenport will tell you more about that. They're going to have to look at establishing attendance and grading guidelines. You know, someone mentioned earlier, we don't want to have that flexibility of changing midstream, and that's, this team is recommending that we don't do that. Assessment, we're going to have to look at assessment a little bit different. Just saying the first word, they're diagnostic, that's probably going to be a key when we return, because we have to look at the lost learning that has occurred. By the time these students return in September, it will have been six months since they've been in a school. It's a long time for any student, regardless of their level. And so lost learning did happen, we know that. And so this remediation and determining where we are with this spiraling, the diagnostic is... is gonna be critical here. They also are gonna have to look at modifying some pacing. We need to make sure that those students that select to stay home 100% virtual, it will be pacing alongside of those that do this hybrid plan. So, this is no easy task, but we're gonna have to look at that. Special education is, is something that we had to look at with the instructional committee. CTE, in particular, CCAP, is gonna have to be looked at a little bit differently, because that is not housed within our base schools, those, they go to the CCAP. And then monitoring student progress, as I mentioned earlier from that survey, we really need to make sure that we do a better job and put a systematic, a systematic, system in place that we are gonna be able to see that there is student engagement, the students are logging on when they're supposed to be, and that teachers are monitoring much more Once again, these are the recommendations from that committee. They also liked the 25% model. I'll explain more about this, but they wanted, they liked the one that was the Monday through Thursday. And really, their thinking behind that was for teacher fatigue. They recognize that many of our staff members are going to be doing the face-to-face teaching as well as the virtual. And so, they wanted the Friday to be a day of virtual learning for all, and that would give teachers a chance to do some planning, professional learning, as well as some conferencing with students. In order for us to do, whether it's one day a week, two days a week, three days, however many we can bring them back, and the goal is to bring them back as many as possible, we cannot continue with the odd-even schedule. That will have to change. So, for example, high schools, instead of doing odd one day, even the next, they will return for shorter blocks of time to have all seven blocks in one day. They are also recommending that we do not use that pass-fail system, that we use genuine grades. And just to clarify, the reason we went that way is because there wasn't a whole lot of new learning going on, but now there will be. We are gonna continue on with the new learning that has to take place. And so, therefore, we can look at a grading system that's more accurate. They recommend that we use this Canvas live conferencing. This is an aspect that's gonna come along with this platform, that's gonna allow teachers to do some live conferencing, which should help with the instructional piece. Again, you'll hear more. The recommendation for elementary is to really focus on numeracy and literacy. With the limited time that we're gonna get them back, we know that science and social studies is important, but we're gonna embed that the best we can within literacy and numeracy, so that will be the focus. They're also recommending that we look at skill-based formative assessments and not benchmark tests. And then finally, their recommendation is to make sure that special needs students that are in special programs do get more FaceTime in school. So, with that, the plan for special ed students right now is to ensure that those who are in the district-wide programs such as ID, MD, ASD, CSEP and the early childhood, we want those to attend daily. And the reason we believe we can make that happen is because those children will ride special needs buses, and those buses were not part of any planning we are doing for the rest of the school population. So, we can create a separate set of bus routes for those students, and we should be able to continue to do that, so that they attend school daily. All of the related services that they receive, such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech services, that will be pushed into those classrooms, so that those students don't have to travel throughout the building. Fortunately, those student-teacher ratios in those classrooms are already small, so we don't have a lot to worry about there with spacing. But we will be emphasizing the hygiene in those classrooms, so we're gonna be washing hands quite a bit, all, a lot, all day long, and do a lot of surface cleaning. As far as CCAP is concerned, this has not been finalized yet, but we're looking at about 300 students that we average at the CCAP program, and we're probably gonna have to look at scheduling them at least two days a week, so that we can give them the one day of the core, and then that second day would be when they would travel to CCAP and get that course that they're taking over there. This could change, obviously, because if we get to go multiple days a week, maybe it's two and two, however we can work that out. Transportation, we're gonna really encourage those students that if they have their own, please drive. That would, that would help us a great deal. But if not, we're gonna work it out, so that after the elementary runs, we will get buses to the high schools to make sure they can get to CCAP. Task Force Team 3, social, emotional, mental wellness. A few different players on this one, other than just administrators, parents and teachers. We also included some behavior specialists, school psychologists, school social workers, school counselors, our friends from Western Tidewater Community Services Board, and then parents, teachers and principals as well. This team is tasked with coming up with a curriculum that we can use to support all students, K-12. They're also gonna be responsible for coming up with some scheduling for professional learning. It is determined privately at this time that teachers are gonna be the best folks to do this. And we're gonna be looking at adding, you know, that year or two that we'd already planned for restorative practices training. We already had a cohort of about 130 or so teachers, teachers and staff that were already trained in restorative practices. So, we will be adding another cohort this year, so we're gonna continue with that. And then also, we're gonna make sure that we do put some mental health supports out, not only for the staff, but also training. We want them to be able to identify any flags that they may see with students, that, so they can report to the appropriate person for some resources. We're also gonna strengthen that partnership that we have with Western Tidewater Community Services Board. They're already in our schools, but we're gonna strengthen that partnership. We're gonna probably need to add some behavior supports. It's been a long time that they've, since they've been in school, and so, we realize that that's probably gonna be another piece that we're gonna have to add, which will mostly look like professional development, probably, for teachers. We also wanna make sure that the teachers are aware of all the supports that are gonna be available to them. Again, we'll be looking at Western Tidewater Community Services Board, as well as AEP Services. They're gonna review the crisis response procedures. We already have this in place, of course, but we probably need to review and make sure that it's strengthened enough that we can utilize for the return in the fall. And then the school counselor's role is probably gonna look a little bit different than it has traditionally. We're very fortunate that we've been selected by the Department of Education to apply for a grant through DOE, and hopefully, this grant is going to provide not only a few additional staff members in the mental health, school mental health professional field, but also some adequate training, a lot of training. And so, we're very excited about this opportunity. The recommendations from this team so far is to definitely find a K-12 curriculum. A lot of SEL curriculums looking at maybe the elementary or up to K-8, but this group felt strongly the need for making sure high school was included. Again, they figure the best way to do this is probably gonna be through the teacher during a daily block. Class meetings or circles is a sort of practice term. Class meetings or circles are already occurring in many of our elementary schools and a lot of our middle schools. So, again, we'll make sure that everyone is properly trained, so that those can take place on a daily basis. They only take five to seven minutes, so it's, it's not a lot of instructional time lost, and in the end, it's a win-win situation for everybody. Again, I just mentioned the staff training, we will make sure that happens. Western Tidewater Community Services Board has already agreed to provide us with numerous training for staff, so again, they have a better understanding of mental health, so they can identify any, any needs that they may have within their students. And then I just mentioned, of course, to make sure that the staff understands that they are gonna be supported as well. All right, transportation. This just gives you a little bit of a picture of what we were dealing with when we started this process. So, again, we had to go under the assumption that all of our students are, that we transport now, about 83% of them are gonna require a bus ride again when we return in the fall. This just gives you a glimpse of that number. This is how many we transport currently at each level. And that's how many buses it takes to transport those. Now, I mentioned to you that we do have 64 and 77 passenger buses. That's three to a seat for elementary, that's how we calculate that number, but it's only two to a seat, so we don't get 77 on a 77-passenger bus for middle and high school students. And we also need to take into consideration that some of our bus routes have very few students on them, because they are going all over the backcountry area. So, for example, Pioneer only has a little over 600 students, but they have about 20 buses, because their, their zone is so big, but not as populated. Anyway, as you go across here, you can see the number of buses that would be required to transport 20% of the students on a daily basis, 25% of the students on a daily basis, or 33%. So, we were pretty gung-ho immediately about going out and trying to get two or three days a week if we could, so we're, let's look at 33%. All right? Well, if we're going with those guidelines at 12 students on a bus, we need 160 buses to transport our elementary students. Impossible, can't do it. And again, I recognize that a lot of divisions are saying, well, we're just gonna, we want parents to bring our students to school, and that's great. We would love for all of our parents to be able to do that. And those that can, we are encouraging you to do that. But there's an equity piece here that we have to recognize, that not all of ours can get to school, and so, we have to be willing to transport them. So, if we go under the assumption that we're going to transport all 83%, as we have been, these are the numbers that we're looking at. So, I think it's pretty quick to see at a glance that where the hardship would come just with transportation. The good news is, we do believe we can probably reexamine this with one student per seat, not skipping a seat. Families coming from the same household, we can sit together, and we haven't calculated that yet, because we're not certain how many we have. But that's gonna eliminate some. But if we put one per seat and not skip a seat, now we can put 24 students on a bus. We're still not quite at half-capacity, but we're almost there, and that definitely means that we're going to be able to transport more students. So, we did put out that survey to the parents, and again, we, we put these plans together so that we could get some feedback. They weren't the most ideal, we understand that, and I know a lot of parents probably looked at that and thought, really, what is my choice here? I don't, you know, I don't feel like I have a choice, and we recognize that. But we are making a commitment that the hybrid option that we're going to offer parents is, is as many days a week as we can possibly get in there. Again, keeping the safe distancing, as well as whatever guidelines are put out there, but also ensuring that we can transport them. So, hybrid option 1 was basically students assigned to one day a week, Monday through Thursday. So, it's basically that 25% model. Friday would be the all-virtual day, and then the other three days that they're not assigned would be virtual as well. So, the example that we gave them was if your child was assigned to a Tuesday for the direct instruction or face-to-face instruction, then they would have to be online Monday, Wednesday and Thursday, with teacher support, of course. Option 2 is very similar, except the difference is Monday through Friday. So, this is more like the 20% model. This is where students would be assigned one day a week, Monday through Friday, and then the other four days a week would be online with the teacher support. Example, again, is if your child is assigned on a Monday, that means Tuesday through Friday would be virtual or online. Option 3 is 100% at-home, online. This is where all instruction will happen at-home, online, and we will be using that Canvas learning management system that collaborates with Google Classroom, iReady and Edge Annuity, and you will hear more about that shortly. This will also be the very same platform that our, our hybrid students would use as well. And we can tell you that any parent that selects this will be, we granted this option. This is, this is going to be given to any parent that wants this, regardless of the Option 4, we wanted to put this out there, because we did have parents reach out to us. Dr. Gordon and I received emails from parents that said we'd really love to see our, our kids just go back on a normal schedule. So, we wanted to include this in the, in the survey. So, this option 4 would be that students come back normally, that we put all the kids on the bus like we normally would, and that we put them in class like we normally would and follow a regular schedule. There would be some restrictions, of course, with some masks, mask-wearing and whatnot. And, and we did put the caveat that this is not the recommendation, but if this is the wish of the community or the school board, for that matter, we wanted to put that out there. These are the results that we got back. We had about 40, a little over 4,400 parents, this was not given to students. So, a little over 4,400 parents who probably have multiple students, in many cases, gave us these responses. That hybrid 1 response was the 41%. Hybrid 2, the Monday through Friday, was 8%. So, combining that hybrid model is about 50%. The 100% online was 24%. And then the return to normal is about 26%. Now, what we plan to do next, I'll get to that in just a minute, actually. This piece of the survey is very important, because we also asked the question, if you do send your child back to school in some way, shape or form, can you provide transportation? And looking at these numbers, if we only have to transport 50% of our students, that will enable us surely to get them to school more than one day a week. I reiterate that if parents can transport their children, we will definitely get them in the buildings more than one day a week. Childcare piece that we are looking at, it is true that we were looking at the priority for Suffolk Public Schools, school-aged children that attend Suffolk Public Schools. And if space allows, we certainly wanna open it up to our disenfranchised students and then any other Suffolk Public School families. But basically, we have designated some schools that are gonna house the daycare. They will have to follow the same guidelines. So, the wings or classrooms or whatever is designated is going to have to follow the same CDC guidelines that we're using to reopen our schools. Transportation will not be provided, so parents are gonna have to get the children to the daycare and pick them up in the evenings. There will be absolutely no transportation provided for this. We don't have the buses to do it, number one. Alphabet, as mentioned here, that is the group that won our before and after-school care, so they did agree to do this full daycare in our buildings during the school day. They're looking at staffing right now and talking to other providers if they need additional staffing, so that we can assure, ensure that we have adequate providers in the spaces that we're giving them in our buildings. The good news about this is, is that we have, we're gonna be able to offer this free to our employees for the first nine weeks, and there will be more details to come with that. There will be an application process based on the number of days that they will, we need for their children and the number of children that they have. It's, it's gonna be taxable, so it'll show up in their check, and then we'll take it out of their check, and I'll let Ms. Forsman kinda talk to you all more about that, if you have questions. Next steps. The first one here, I'm gonna probably say three or four times. Tomorrow, we are sending out a fall registration form. This has nothing to do with enrollment in Suffolk Public Schools. This is literally a fall registration form, and this is for all students who are currently enrolled in Suffolk Public Schools. What we need to know is, do you want to do some sort of hybrid form to get your children back in the building? Do you want to be 100% online at home? And can you provide your own transportation? Again, we need all parents to complete this, this, we need one form per student, because we're looking for student ID, student name, address, grade and school. Then we'll be able to sort this come July 24th, so that we can begin the scheduling process, so that we're getting the proper schedule for the right students, and then we can make those bus routes for those that need transportation. So, it's critical. We're gonna send this out tomorrow, and it will be posted online tomorrow, July 24th. We want these back, please. We're also gonna be monitoring the reopening phases in the state of Virginia. As I mentioned earlier, if we start moving beyond Phase 3, we can start loosening up some of these guidelines. If it looks like we're moving backwards, then we're gonna have to probably reexamine how we're, we're opening up. We have to determine staffing, and we're not quite there yet. We need to make sure that we have enough drivers and teachers, quite frankly, to, to operate face-to-face instruction and getting the students there. The big task coming up also is going to be getting those bus routes created, because they will be unique, and we're gonna try to do them geographically, so that we can use buses to do double runs if we need to, because they'll be in such close proximity. And then, of course, creating those master schedules, that's gonna be a heavy lift. Teacher training's gonna have to be scheduled, the TNL team's working on that right now. I believe we have some discussions with students next week, and Dr. Gordon's gonna lead that. It's gonna be a virtual session, but we do have students that we've invited for that. Student device distribution, we wanna make sure, again, that we have all students with the device in their hand, K-12. So, we're looking at the tablets and Chromebooks for our elementary students, and that's gonna be the next step. But we still have some secondary folks that we wanna make sure have a device and the cajete if necessary. Food distribution, as I mentioned earlier, is gonna be another challenge that we're gonna have to weed through and decide how we wanna do this. Will it be a satellite? Will we be able to do buses at a different time of day, et cetera? But we have to come up with something, because if we do have some sort of hybrid format and students are at home on some of those days, we have to get meals to them. Communication, again, I can't stress enough, is gonna be key. We wanna make sure that the parents are fully aware. Again, Ms. Ward has already started putting some things ready to, to load onto the website, starting with tomorrow's online, I mean, excuse me, the registration form. But we're gonna just keep things up there in the forefront, so that we use social media and the, and the website to communicate with folks. And then finally, I will be back, probably along with our new CAO, to communicate with you what our plan is in August, to see, you know, if that's gonna be amenable for you all, and, and you will vote on it at that time. We probably will put the caveat out there, though, that it's gonna still be fluid, because it will depend, you know, August 13th is still about a month away from when we'll open school, and so, therefore, we'll have to... we'll open school, and so therefore, we'll have to see what it looks like at that point. And I believe I'm done talking. Can I entertain any questions at this time?
Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. This was just wonderful. I really appreciate all the hard work you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just going forward with communication, do you think at the end of, at these PowerPoints or whatever, you could put a little, one slide that just says what the acronyms are? Because you-
That's a great point. I don't, and, and you know, I never think about that, and that's why I like having Ms. Ward around, because she'll give me that non-educator perspective.
Yeah. If you could, just one slide at the very end-
That's a great, that's a great suggestion. Thanks.
And then, parents would know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we start, our, our frontline people are our bus drivers. Now, when I, when I listen to the news and I listen to people, I, I've heard some parents come up with questions, because I too have those same questions. When I listen to the American Association of Pediatrics and this whole, everybody needs to go back to school, and I go to doctor's offices quite frequently, and you can't get in the doctor's office without somebody aiming a thermometer at you and taking your temperature, and you have to have on a mask, and I hear people saying that, well, our bus drivers are our frontline people. And 6:30 in the morning, since I've been through the, the drill with the getting on the bus kind of thing, who's out there aiming a, a thermometer at the children who are waiting at the bus stop at 6:30 in the morning? If somebody has a fever, what do you do? What does the bus driver do? Do you send, what do you do with the sick child who's standing there with the fever?
Those are great questions.
And the parent is gone to work? These are all things that happen in real life.
Absolutely.
So what are our plans for those kinds of things? And how do we address those kinds of things, because they happen in real life? And then the other thing is, when a child does get to school, if the parent's dropped the child off, the parent may not even know. You know, I'm not saying that the parent's irresponsible or anything. Parent may not know that the child is sick. When the child gets to school, if the child is in school and the child is ill, do all the other kids have to stay home for, for the next 14 days? I mean, how are we, the child and the teacher, because that happens? We have children in special education classes, having been a special ed teacher and worked with children who have severe disabilities. Many of them are medically fragile. So if somebody's in that class with some type of disorder, that shuts the whole class down for the next two weeks. Are we, or is anybody at the State Department, because I realize this isn't coming from us, is anybody taking these things into consideration? Because these are facts with this disorder that we need to deal with, with this disease that we need to deal with.
Thank you so much for bringing that up, because that is truly, that's getting into the weeds that we have to do, that people don't realize, and that's, there are so many moving parts, and those are some of the moving parts. Going back to the screening part, we went round and round about that, and again, we are partnering very closely with the Health Department, and I just had a meeting with the Department of, the Virginia Department of Health last, this week, earlier this week with Ms. Williford. But yeah, we were able to ask some direct questions, and these are the types of questions we want them to think as educators, because this is a different world, and these are children, these are not adults.
Right.
We didn't, we can't put the responsibility of taking a, a thermometer reading, first of all, by a bus driver on a bus in the morning, because if the child has a fever, what do we do? We can't put them on the bus, because we already know they have a fever, and if we send them home, where, where are we sending them to?
Where are we sending?
We don't know if anyone's at home. So they, they suggested that we do the passive-type screening, if you will, and all of this is about to be posted, because we're, we have it all in writing. But it's going to be more of a passive-type screening, where it's a questionnaire, if you will. So it will be without the thermometer until we determine that one of those questions is answered. So you're right, when we get a busload of 12 or 24 students, the, the matter is, do you want to go out there and test all of those? The Department of Health says no, that's, they don't recommend that. And so we now have a flowchart that we have in place that will show us what to do when folks have symptoms. That's part of where the isolation room will come in, it's part of where we're going to report to the Department of Health, where contact tracing is going to come in. We are relying on their guidance as to whether we close a wing, close a classroom, how many people are going to have to be quarantined or self-isolated. All of those things are going to follow into a flowchart where we have to get advice from them, depending on, I guess, other factors, or whether they are positive, whether it's an allergy, that type of symptom, but those are all things that we have to consider. It's, this is not an easy task.
So the Health Department is, is partnering with us-
Western Titlewood Health Department.
-in this regard?
Yes.
And so they're saying that we are, these are things that are somehow going to work themselves out, because, as I said, you know, when we go to the doctor's office, they are not things that work themselves out. They aim the thing at us, and, and two people can't even go in the doctor's office with one child. One person has to go in the doctor's office with one child. So I'm, I'm, I'm just at a loss for how this is going to work out. I can't even visualize-
We do have the, the handheld thermometers that we will use.
They do.
We do.
And, like I said, the bus driver's out there.
Yeah, we have them, but yeah, we won't be done on a bus in the morning, for sure.
Right. So the bus driver is going to have to bring all of them to school, and then when they get to school, what are the principals supposed to do? What are the, if we suspect somebody is sick, then-
Or we get the nurse involved.
Right. And then the other children who are in the classroom, are they committed to go down the hall?
And then we have to make a decision, he's in the decision tree.
Or, right. This is, these are-
It, it will be in writing, and it, you know, not, there won't be a perfect solution to this, because we're going to be putting a lot of people together, so there won't be a perfect solution to this. We're going to do the best that we can, and we're going to follow the guidance that we're given by the Health Department.
But they are trying to give us some guidance.
Yes, ma'am. We are working very closely with them.
And before we vote, somebody's going to show us what this guidance is.
Absolutely, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we have a document that we're working on right now, that all of these, many of these things that I've mentioned have a link to them, so you could actually see what a plan is, or this flowchart I'm mentioning, or what happens when someone tests positive, or what's the screening process. All of that is already in the works.
So, Dr., but that is the billion-dollar question that the Health Group has been working on, and as Dr. Rice mentioned, the health plan that we have to post, after we get an approval from the DOE, we have to really list it all. And as soon as you get to a checkpoint area, we purchased about 200, is it 10? 210 thermometers that we've already began to disperse to our schools, but before we ask them to use it, we wanted to make sure there's going to be some training that was going to occur. And Sarah Williford is helping to lead that. And the good part about it is, we're actually using our summer workouts as the pilot for how our, some of our flowcharts are going to work.
Okay.
And so Dr. Lee, Dr. Rice, Ms. Williford, they've all kind of put together the checkpoints, and as soon as something happens, you have to go over to this next step. And this next step is the isolation rooms. This next step is the contact tracing. The webinars that took place in this week was on the risk management of schools if there is a positive test, including if it comes from a child or if it comes from a staff member. Those are the things that we want to make sure that we're going to have very clearly that's going to be posted, but we also want to make sure the language is easy for people to follow. And one of the things that Dr. Rice has talked about a lot of times in our own cabinet meetings, but she didn't mention tonight, we're really going to need our parents' help here, because we really need them to be able to check their children, if they're not already at work, before they leave the house. That's the key. And, and we also have to make sure it's clear that just because a child has a cough, or just because a child has a fever, doesn't necessarily mean that they, they have the coronavirus.
Right.
There, there are different steps and things that we have to check, and then, once we have that contact tracing, then we know, okay, 24 hours, we're not even supposed to go into the room. Mr. Napier's team, Mr. Downs and them, they're supposed to wait. Then we do our disinfecting, then once we do our contact, contact tracing, that's when the communication's going to come out to the School Division. But we want to make sure that our forms, we've had Mr. Waller take a look at some things. We want to make sure our forms are going to protect those people that are involved, but also are going to make sure that the School Division's not going to be held liable.
The other thing is, just the little thing, like students going to the restroom. How are we, what are we talking about? Because as I work with little ones and they say they have to go to the restroom, of course I'm going to let them go if they have to go. How are we working with cleaning, as they don't all go in groups?
Yeah, that's-
They go one at a time. How are we-
Those will all be pieces of the-
All those are, all, all those are going to be addressed.
Those will all be things that have to be procedurally written out for scheduling.
Right.
How we do that. It's already part of the cleaning process and procedures that, again, we're going to be able to share here shortly, but there's, that will be part of the scheduling. You know, who's going to be monitoring these restrooms? Who's going to let folks know, we've just had a group of kids in here, we need to have cleaning take place, or, or what have you?
Yeah, because sometimes you don't have a group. Sometimes you have one, you have two, you have three, and they trickle in and out.
Correct.
Do we have the staff to cover that?
Yep.
Right.
They will all be part of that scheduling.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Riddick.
I'm uncomfortable with sending our kids back to school. I'm at, to, 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 to be honest, I was prepared to vote no today and go 100% virtual, with an exception for special ed, if we can come up with something. There are too many gray areas. Being a bus driver for seven years for Suffolk Public Schools, I can tell you, and most of our staff could attest to this, there are parents who know their children are sick and will still send them to school. So I understand we want our children to return back to normal, and I have 300 children that I have in my nonprofit youth organization. I would love to be preparing for football season and have our marching youth band just thrown down. I would love to do it. However, their life is more important to me. Their family members' lives is more important to me. I'm talking firsthand experience. My grandmother, who is eight or seven years old, and I can share this, has coronavirus. No, I haven't been around her. It's stressing. It's, it's very difficult to deal with. In most cases, our children, being a bus driver, I can attest to my experience, I'm trying not to get emotional up here, but it's personal for me. In most cases, our people who watch our children when they get out of school are grandparents. One of the largest group of people that's at risk. So I've been receiving countless of emails regarding people, open back up, open back up, open back up. And I try to look at it from both ends. I just don't see us, any plan submitting that we have equivalating to the risk of a child losing his or her life, a grandparent losing, or a person who is exposed to asymptomatic child who came in contact at Suffolk Public Schools, or the risk of any potential liability that we would take. Our bus drivers, who are all, who are some up in age, our cafeteria workers who are up in age, our teachers who are up in age, with some have underlying health conditions. At this point, I'm just, I really wish, God knows I do, I really wish we could vote no right now, because it gives parents 60 days to get your affairs in order versus coming back in August. I'd rather we vote no now and come back and say, hey, the coronavirus is done, they got a cure, let's come back. I just want to go on record, and I may get crucified for this, but that's fine. I'm 100% not in favor of sending our children back to school, putting our children on school buses, exposing our staff. I work at a place where you have to be thermometer-checked. If a person has a high temperature, you too are exposed. It's airborne. So I'm going to stop there, because I'm getting emotional, but I'm not in favor of sending our children back at all, face-to-face learning, that is.
I think one of the, um, may I speak? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Thor.
Thank you. I certainly hear what people are saying about the fear of going back, of course, but there are parents, it is their choice, and there are teachers, bus drivers, who are also, don't see that as, as high a risk and are willing to go back. So I really appreciate the two choices you've given. For those parents who are, feel much like Mr. Riddick, they have the choice of staying home 100% of the time. There are a lot of parents out there who maybe, who definitely value, say, the guidance of the American Pediatric Association. I mean, under normal circumstances, we would give them kudos as being really, really important, and then maybe because it doesn't fit our model of thinking, all of a sudden, what they say doesn't matter. I don't know how that works, but I think there are parents who are really concerned about emotional and social learning, emotional and social development and so on, and I really appreciate that we're going to give that choice. No one is forcing any child to go to school when we have a choice of being at home. But you also have to give parents, it is a parent choice, their education. We cannot dictate to parents what they, the choices they want to make. We're not Big Brother. We don't, we're not here to tell parents what to do. So I appreciate that there's the choice, and as long as we have the personnel to do it. I know that you put out a, an inquiry. Did you get a pretty good response from our staff, like who's willing to come back, who's not, or more, who's not coming back? Do you know how that looks?
Well, so I don't know that it was so definitive, and I don't know, yes, I was going to say, I was going to call Dr. Brown up here. I don't think it's quite definitive yet, because I think there were some maybes in there.
Okay, thanks.
We have over 2,000 staff.
Right.
We got about 1,600 responses.
That's pretty good.
It was very good. And in those responses, of course, we can't ask who has those underlying conditions, because that violates HIPAA, but we can ask if you have one of these conditions, if you have childcare issues, if it was one lump question, you just checked yes. And so when you put that in there, it was about, I would say about 25% that selected yes, they had one of those conditions that would be of concern. Then there was another question that said, are you comfortable with returning to work?
Right.
And out of that same group, so out of that same group, over half of them were comfortable coming to work.
Okay.
So it really was, I would say, about 150 staff, and that's everyone. Now, that's teachers, that's support staff, that's everyone. We surveyed everyone. It was about 150 that still said they were not comfortable coming in, because you got to understand, sometimes if you have an underlying condition, but you're healthy, you know, you, your things are in order, and you, and there is no risk, and people will come in, and there are some people that have other issues, taking care of a loved one, taking care of someone in a home that has one of these conditions, which puts them at greater risk. So the survey would look pretty good, and we'll resurvey them again, to kind of, we didn't go into detail, what do you teach, all of this specific.
Right, right.
So I'll reach out to those groups of people and just to get the specific details of that group.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Would you say that again? You said 1,600 of the 2,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said 50% of them?
I would say 50% said, yes, they had one of those conditions. About, it was about 750, or somewhere around that.
About 750 said they had a condition?
Yeah, well, it was a multi-tiered question. Did you have an underlying condition? Anyone in your house? Are you over the age? But it wasn't asking specific questions. That was one question. So if you selected yes, it could be one of those.
It could be a multitude of those.
Absolutely.
So of those, was there a question that said, would you be interested in coming back to work, or would you be willing to come back to work full-time?
Other question was, would you be, how do you, are you comfortable returning to work?
Right.
Yes, no, or maybe. About 150 said, no, they're not comfortable returning to work. So that's the group we're kind of really focusing on. We have a maybe, too. Those may, that maybe group, we kind of got to talk with them to see exactly what it is that could keep them safe, and it depends on what they are doing. There are some people that can come in, it's not amongst a lot of people, and they may and they may be okay. So it just depends on what conditions are in school. Will people be wearing face masks? All of those things will be answered.
So how many said yes? How many said yes? We haven't gotten to that one.
Okay, so yes was about, I would say about 46% said yes.
Okay, okay.
That they had one of those conditions.
No.
What?
I would say they'd be interested in coming back to work full-time.
150 said no, so do the math from about 70.
So 150 out of 700?
About 740, yes.
Okay, okay, so about.
Said, no, they were not comfortable coming to work.
So about 600 people said they'd be interested in coming back to work out of the 2,000 people that work for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, out of 1,600 that responded.
Out of 1,600 that responded. So out of 2,000 people that work for us, 1,600 responded. And we have 600 people who said they were interested in coming back to work. The rest of them didn't say anything because they didn't talk. So we can say 600 people said they'd be willing to come back to work. So after we get some real numbers about how many people we really have, then we'll have some idea of what we can offer and actually what of any of these plans we can actually do. Because we don't know what we can actually do, and we don't even know what positions these 600 people, they might all be cafeteria workers, or they might all be.
We do have the positions.
We do have the positions. So we don't know, or do you know if the majority of these people were teachers? Or if the majority of these people?
Yes, the majority are teachers. Because we have more teachers. We have about 1,100 teachers total. Out of that 2,000, about 1,100 to 1,200 are teachers.
Okay, okay.
And so those are good follow-up questions, Ms. Story and Dr. Buck, because that's the cross-reference we're doing. One of the main things that we have to take a look at here is for those folks that, and remember, I want to reiterate what Dr. Brown said. There were four to five different categories within that one question. Because we can't answer, ask this one question because that basically alienates a group of people. Are you over 65? We can't ask that question.
Right, right, right.
But that's where we're gonna cross-reference when it comes to the master schedule. For those teachers, for example, that have underlying health issues that are already on file, those are gonna be the ones that we're gonna first look at for our virtual instructors. That's gonna be the plan. But then we have to be able to cross-reference. This is where Christine Lafferty has been just brilliant. We have to be able to cross-reference with Dr. Brown's work, what their certifications are to determine what classes that we know we're gonna have virtual support for, and which ones we don't. And one of the things that Dr. Lee is looking at is, okay, if we don't have a virtual teacher already on staff, we can maybe, uh, do a contract with a company and bring some additional support in there. The second piece is for those folks that have jobs, that have those pre-existing medical conditions, do we have the ability to allow them to telework? Do we have the ability to be able to switch up their hours? For example, a custodian that normally would work during the day, that may have some pre-existing medical conditions. Maybe we change their hours and have them work tonight.
Right, when there's nobody in the building.
Right. That's the stuff that these task force are finalizing.
Okay.
And that's part of the reason why, even though the board is gonna officially vote on whatever the plan may be in August, you're gonna begin to see new information coming out from us basically every week. Because we want to give our school community an opportunity to process this. Okay? Process this, like Mr. Riddick said, to be able to plan for it. By the time we get to the August 13th school board meeting, 90% of your questions, 90% of the school community's questions should be answered. And then the next day, I'll do another Facebook Live if there's any reoccurring things. But filling out the forms, the follow-up surveys that we're gonna have, and then that's really taking a look. Because one of the things that Dr. Rice mentioned, if the new guidelines are saying, and this is what a lot of school divisions that were doing, 50%, they were originally applying for a variance to have the one kid, you know, every, every seat. But the kids have to wear a mask. That's the new guidance. You can do three feet, but the kids have to wear a mask.
But you have to have a mask.
And we've already received lots of emails. I know that a lot of you all have seen things on social media where parents are saying, if my kid has to wear a mask, they're not coming to school. Or my kid will not wear a mask. I mean, we're, we're getting that feedback. So we're trying to gauge that with the task force that's actually working on the health piece. We're trying to gauge that. We, not only are we looking at the face mask, but we're also looking at the face shields, especially for our primary grades, for the, for the teachers to be able to have word formation, things of that nature. But the face shields are not as safe as the mask.
Right.
I mean, those are just some of the different things that the team, i- i- and we've got some things ironed out. But we want to make sure from the liability side, the health side, the information that we're giving to parents for the waivers and forms, very similar to what we're doing for our summer workouts, it has to be really clear. Because we don't want anyone to make any mistakes based on confusion. And this is why Dr. Rice had mentioned that the communication side from his awards team is gonna be, you know, really, really, you know, important. And we may end up setting up some, you know, really encouraging people to go to our SPS emails to send us additional questions. But I can tell you this, the parents that are on the task force have basically thought of every question that you all are saying today. I mean, they really have. And, and we're taking that feedback. And when I'm meeting with the Superintendent Advisory Council next week, I'm then gonna present a lot of the same things, and Dr. Rice is gonna join me for that meeting. We're gonna present a lot of the same things because we need to get that kid's perspective. You know, we really promised that the kids are gonna be the last group of people that we talk to. Because they're the ones that's gonna be affected more than anybody else, especially with what they've already went through in the spring. So we have to make sure, and, and I know there's been, you know, some other things out there from what other school divisions are doing. Folks, we're gonna do what's best for Suffolk.
Well, good.
I don't care what any other school division is doing. We're gonna do what's best for Suffolk.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Well, actually, I want to give you some advice, some, some, some golden nuggets you all can take as you leave from here and put your stuff together. This was sent to me by several constituents. So an elementary teacher tests positive for COVID and has to quarantine for 14 days. This means the entire class was exposed. So the entire class has to quarantine for 14 days too? A middle school, high school teacher tests positive. And then there are 150 to 200 students have to quarantine for 14 days too. In elementary schools, special, you know, the, the, the special programs they have are PE, music, library, et cetera. Teacher tests positive. Then the entire school has to quarantine because all students has been exposed? These are some things I really want us to think about.
It's part of the plan, honestly. It, it really could be that some schools are closing. It could be that we have to close the division. These are, these are realities of what could happen when, when positive cases arise within the division. And so these are literally already in writing. They just haven't been made public yet. But we, we have worked very closely with the, the Department of Health because we know that that, it could happen. And so we have to be prepared. Is it a matter of, is it just cleaning? Or do we close it down? Is that wing closed? Is this building closed? We, it will, it will, it's a, it's more of a contact tracing. And that's where we have to determine how extensive is the response.
Yes, ma'am. Another point I want to also make is, getting old, it's come. The other point that I would like to make, it just dipped that quick. If we do that, it's gonna come back to me and I'll say it then.
Say, maybe. If, if we do that, this is where that virtual piece that we already have there is gonna be important. As there, that, this is the reason why the options that Dr. Rice gave were the hybrid piece.
And this is also a good time to point out that this is going to be used as a new normal for us. Because you know, when those snow days or hurricane days come up and we have to close, every child has a device. We're gonna use this Canvas platform. Teaching and learning is gonna keep going on. And so that's, that's what we, you know, it, 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 it will continue.
Oh, it came back to me. I want us to keep in mind the difference between equality and equity. You have given statistics. There wasn't actual numbers, you gave roundabouts of those who respond. And looking at that data, I want us to ensure that it's not just the teachers in the northern end of the city that, that want to come back to work. Or the teachers in the southern end. I know these are things you all are considering. But I just want to reiterate and reinforce that.
About the staff survey?
The staff survey. Because we have to make sure we got enough staff to run division-wide.
That's why it was on the to-do list, the next steps. We have to look at that.
And I'm gonna close with this. I'm really not a fan of sending our kids back to school with all of this, these gray areas.
All right.
I have one question.
Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, well, too, you said that you were sending out a form. Is this form that's gonna be sent to the parents only electronically?
So, yes, it will be. Uh, it's gonna also be on the website. So if we need to, and she's gonna do some phone blasts and peach jars so that if they need to get a paper copy, for example, we can certainly.
I just wanna make sure that
Yeah, absolutely.
all of our parents are able to get the, whatever forms we send out, surveys, whatever, that they're able to do it. Because everybody does not have a Chromebook or a computer or whatever. So I just want to make sure. And the second one, um, with the back to school, um, because I work with students with behaviors. And I know you said that we're gonna have Weston Tide Water bring more people in or whatever. But there's a lot of behaviors that happen on the bus. And if we're talking about, um, with the kids, you know, on one, one per seat or whatever, one, one per seat, whatever it is, how, with the safety precautions, how are we gonna help the bus driver that's already struggling? Because just because we have the pandemic and whatever, these kids did not just miraculously become angels. So, you know, we have to, we have to be able to prepare and help the kids because they could be fighting. That's not six feet apart if they start fighting.
That actually could be the one bonus of having a, a very few number of students on the bus. That, that could be. But you're absolutely correct. When it comes to ele- when it comes to elementary.
Not necessarily.
When it comes to elementary runs, that is something that we have to consider.
Yeah, and it's not just elementary either. It's, it's from pre-K. Because I've seen principals get beat up by pre-K students. So it's from pre-K all the way to the 12th grade. And I'm just seeing, you know, and everything that you said, Mr. Riddick, I agree with you. And I'm just saying, we need to just put different things in, in our minds so we can ask these, these questions. Because the safety and the lives of our students and our, you know, administrators and our teachers, that's what's priority. Yes, we want them to learn. We, I wish I could wave a magic wand and we could go back.
It could go away.
But, but we can't. And playing Russian roulette with their lives, I'm just not with it.
Madam Chair, uh, I have a question also. What are the liability issues here? How does that play into this? Is that going to be addressed?
So that was the entire focus of the webinar from the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. And this is part of the reason why, you heard me state earlier that Suffolk Public Schools was gonna follow the CDC guidelines. The, the most challenging part, and this is where the contact tracing comes in, the most challenging part for any victim is to prove where they got the disease, where they got the virus. And unless they can actually specify that it was due to negligence on the staff, on the school division, that's the only way you're really gonna have an issue. And this, this is really part of the reason why, when Dr. Rice was speaking, she spoke about the directional hallways, similar to what you see in grocery stores. We, we spoke about the, the signage that's gonna be going up in our schools within the next couple of weeks. We have to make sure that the, the videos that are gonna be coming out from the Community Engagement Office shows what those expectations are. And for staff members, you know, one of the things they spoke about, if a staff member has, for example, someone at home, that's acceptable. That, that is, you know, uh, higher probability of catching coronavirus. We're still looking at the policy that we may have to make some adjustments on. Because the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, their legal team recommended that a staff member would take sick days. But they can only take up to 10, which is less than the 14 potential days of quarantine. So we're still trying to make sure that whatever we do, we have our procedures laid out. If our procedures are laid out, Ms. Mayo, the school division's gonna have very little liability.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mittig.
May I ask Dr. Gordon a question?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Gordon, when, when, in the event that there's a coronavirus in a classroom and the teacher has to self-quarantine for 14 days, are those days going to be counted against their sick leave? Or will there be, uh, some sort of special compensation made for them?
So that is the million-dollar question. One of the things we're looking at is to make sure it doesn't go against FMLA. To make sure that if, and, and the key is, Mr. Mittig, let me go back a little bit. They have to get that test. They can't just stay out for 14 days. The proof is gonna have to come back in through the Human Resources Department on what the results are. We're gonna look at it as a staff, and I'll be honest, our Chief Financial Officer, Wendy Forsman, literally asked the exact same question the other day, and it's on our agenda again for next week. As part of the, basically, we're gonna have a guidebook for all students, staff, and everyone to follow. That's gonna be the question that we're gonna have to be able to address. Will the 14 days count against a teacher's sick leave? And school divisions are being told right now, yes. But we need to see if that's the best thing for Suffolk Public Schools.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Dr. Buck.
I'm sorry. Can we, as a board, because these are rules that, that we can be responsible for. So if we're saying to a teacher, you gotta teach a class, and we're saying that a student in your class has coronavirus and you're being exposed to this virus, then you've gotta stay home and self-isolate. And then we're gonna punish you by saying you've gotta take your sick leave and stay home or self-quarantine? That is not right by any, any way that I can possibly imagine that we're gonna punish the teacher or the bus driver or the cafeteria worker or somebody else by saying that you have to take your sick leave yourself and stay home because somebody exposed you to something that they had? And then if you get sick, you have no sick leave and you, you're docked in pay? I mean, how, how do we do that?
That's the policy that we're gonna have to adjust, Dr. Buck. Because one of the first suggestions that we looked at, if a teacher is exposed from a student and a teacher has to self-quarantine, our first step more than likely is gonna be to make that teacher a virtual instructor.
Right.
That's gonna be our very first solution.
Right.
But then we gotta see, okay, when do they go get tested? Because after you go get tested, there's still a, kind of a waiting period too.
Yes, you have to wait till the, till the results come back.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask the Policy Committee to review some things on that. Your is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think we, we need to do that because that in, in no way is right.
That's right.
Madam Chair, may I speak too? And I, I agree with Dr. Buck. That is not fair. If, if they would contract, uh, the disease or, or whatever, and they would have to use their sick leave like that, that would not be the right thing to do. And so we do need to look at that, yeah.
I don't want to speak for the committee, especially the Task Force Team One, Mr. Leford, Mr. Napier, but this is gonna fall into theirs. I think they're gonna have to come up with some, some recommendations to bring to the Policy Committee to look at. It, it's my personal opinion that we're gonna have to be as lenient as possible in these situations. Uh, by no means do we want to penalize any employee for situations such as that. And, and I, 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 I think, you know, Mr. Waller's gonna have to weigh in on this as well since it will be involving policy. But yeah, we're gonna, we want to be as fair as we possibly can. But I think if they come together with some recommendations, certainly that, that will, because Dr. Brown's on that committee. So we, by bringing recommendations, I think that you all will be able to help with some decisions as far as policy.
Madam Chair.
I just want to bring some clarification to that.
I just want to bring some clarification to that. All right, so first thing, if we put people out for precaution, a lot of, what we have been doing in the past is that's an admin leave with pay because we're putting them on self-quarantine for 14 days because of possible exposure, whether it's at school, whether it's in family, because we don't want them in the building if they've been exposed. So that generally could be the admin leave with pay, where the sick leave may come into play, and that's where we have to make a decision if they have one of those underlying conditions and teleworking may not be an option. So if then they have to come into work for whatever purposes, for example, the example that Dr. Gordon used, the custodian that could work at night, that may be over 65, we can accommodate you, you may be at high risk, but we can bring you at night. Well, no, I'm still afraid to come in. I don't want to risk that. Those are the individuals that may have to take that leave because we can put them in a safe place and they choose not to come in. But usually when people are possibly exposed, then that, as a precaution, so we won't, you know, spread the exposure, that can be used as admin with pay if they can't do it virtually.
Madam Chair, I've got a couple of questions. Coronavirus, how long does it last on the surfaces? Do anyone know? Two hours to 14 days? So that, to me, this is me speaking for Tyrone Riddick, to me, that rules out a person 65 coming in at night shift when you have a possible exposure every day if they don't feel safe coming in. That's me speaking. Let me finish. In addition to that, would staff be required, all of our staff, to take a coronavirus test prior to reopening school? That yield a negative result?
Right. And so, two things we need to look at. Will we be able to get all the staff in, number one? Number two, do we have the money to pay for it? And to go back to your original question, when Mr. Napier gave you that timeframe, air sanitizing machines that we bought up will be the very first thing that goes into the classroom before, you know, a person is actually going to be in there cleaning. That's going to be our first line of defense. And Terry, Mr. Napier, did you say, was that 90 minutes normally?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, five minutes, five minutes for that room to be basically sanitized. Then we do the cleaning because, Mr. Riddick, the areas that we're really going to focus on is the same thing that we spoke about in March when we closed. It's the high-touch areas, your doorknobs, your light switches, your desk table tops, et cetera. That's going to be the huge focus. And because we didn't, you know, we couldn't get all of the custodial staff that we want, Mr. Napier's team is prioritizing. And we're trying to make sure that when we set these zones up, this is why, if we do go back, having a reduced number in a school is going to be key because once a kid or a class or a group leaves an area, we can go in there and we can send them to a clean area. That's going to be our plan. And then the next day, flip-flop. That's really how we're going to be able to work it out. So the training that he has, our custodial crew, is just starting because a lot of it's going to depend on what the flowchart that Dr. Rice is talking about is going to be. That's what we're doing really, starting next Monday through the end of August. I mean, that's, I wish I could honestly sit here and tell you all that every plan that we're going to make was going to be perfect, but we all know there's not a perfect solution to this. And we also know that not everybody's going to be happy with what we do. This is why we're given multiple options.
Right.
But the task force has been very, very diligent in thinking about that. And we are even discussing, Mr. Heinz called me today, Ms. Forzman called me today. We need to make a decision soon if we're going to buy masks for our kids, as an example, just to make sure we get them because now the cost of masks is starting to go back up, you know, typical supply and demand. So part of me reading that intro to you alls because I wanted to really give you all some insight into what we're doing. We have seven weeks, okay? We have seven weeks. Halfway into that seven weeks, we're going to give you all the final version. After Dr. Rice and Dr. Branch and Dr. Davenport, because Maria, you're going to be part of that, too. After they give you that final version on August 13th, we then have three weeks to make sure that our entire school community knows what to do. That's how we're dividing this all up.
So currently, as it's planned, our staff will not be required to take a screening test prior to coming back to work. So if they're asymptomatic, they will know.
For actual COVID tests.
Actual COVID tests.
That is not in the plan at this point. But I want to add to that machine that we were just talking about, that five that takes it and thoroughly sanitizes everything will also be the same machines that we use on buses. We have those already set up for each bus ramp and folks that are trained that are going to go on each bus as they deboard so that we can get it ready for the next run. So, right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Riddick.
I'm not sure who's going to answer, but I have a question. Will schools be closed to visitors and volunteers?
It will be very restricted, very restricted. So, for example, volunteers will probably, we will probably not utilize volunteers. Visitors will probably be limited to just the front office, maybe a parent or whatever that need to come in and pick up a child or what have you, but there will be very strict limitations on who comes into that building.
Thank you.
Well, it seems like to me, we have a lot of questions. Ms. Holloman has a long list. I read part of it while she was, and I agree with a lot of the things, you know, I've been thinking about some of these things as we've gone along. I've already asked Dr. Gordon about some of them. I think we all have a lot of questions. The public should realize that this is a fluid plan, as you are saying, and that everybody up here, our major concern is safety. We want to educate people, but safety comes first and we want to go back to as much normalcy as possible. But I think everyone up here and the audience and everyone agrees that this is a difficult process. And I commend you, Dr. Rice, Dr. Gordon, and all of these people that are on the task force, the different ones, for the work they're doing because it's taken thousands of hours, you know, and you still have maybe only touched the surface, like you're saying. There are so many things we can't even imagine, you know. There are other questions that will occur, but I commend you for the job that all of you are doing, you know, to move us forward.
For what it's worth, I'm starting right now, this is my 36th year in education, and I have never, ever, ever had to tackle such a monstrosity as this.
I wasn't going to say the years, but I knew.
And, yeah, well, I just put it out there for everybody now, so, but anyway.
Right.
So it is, it's a very difficult task, and I really do want, I do want the community, if nothing else, as I walk away tonight, to understand that, you know, we understand that this is frustrating for everybody. There is no perfect plan. We do want to get everybody in the buildings as soon as possible, but we can't unless we're certain that safety is ensured. And so that, I just want to make sure that everybody understands safety's first. Yes, we want to get them all in, but we're doing the best we can.
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Ms. Byron, before I go back to my seat, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Dr. Davenport because as she's coming up, Canvas is going to be a game changer for the school division. And this is being provided free by the Virginia Department of Education, but this will be a major budget item for us whenever the Virginia Department of Education no longer decides to pay for it. This is going to be the learning platform that we're going to use so that when students tap the app or go directly to the website, they'll be able to see attendance, assignments, communications with teachers. It collaborates and works seamlessly with Google Classroom, with Edgenuity, with iReady. Teachers can also upload additional resources and information. And a lot of our school community, because we've already gotten some feedback, is familiar with this because it's being used at the majority of the colleges in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Davenport, our new director of curriculum instruction, so she can give you some more details. Dr. Davenport?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hopefully, this will be a bright spot with all of the questions. Hopefully, this will alleviate at least the learning management system that we'll be utilizing today. So what we're doing here in Suffolk is, we had been looking at a learning management system for a few years now, and we had not really put it on the radar for this year, of course, with COVID that did come up. And so one of the things that has been offered by the state is the Virtual Virginia Outreach Program. Virtual Virginia has been established in the state of Virginia for a number of years, and we have students that are completely virtual through the Virtual Virginia program, and it is a free service to Virginia public school students that allows local students to take online courses with state-approved teachers, these are Virginia teachers, throughout the school year and throughout the summer. And so what Virtual Virginia decided to do this year is they created an outreach program, and that was developed to provide all Virginia public schools a platform that gives students and teachers online access to instructional content at no cost to the division. So this access has been guaranteed for two years for free from the state. At that point, they are looking at, can they provide this for the state after those two years? But right now, we've been guaranteed two years of free access. And so what we're getting with this program between Virtual Virginia and Canvas, and just so you're clear, Virtual Virginia is a state program, Canvas is a learning management system operated by a private corporation. For the outreach program expansion, Virtual Virginia will provide a solution, which is a scaled online content delivery to the school's division students and to the teachers. It's a learning management system. So if you're familiar with something like Blackboard, it's very similar to that. It's basically, we call it Google Classroom on steroids because it has a lot of extra features that Google Classroom does not have. We also will be getting onboarding for schools, teachers, and students. We will have tier-one assistance as far as the service that teachers will be able to get and the help that teachers will be able to get. We will get K-12 online learning modules. So what we're getting through Virtual Virginia will be the content. Virtual Virginia already has Virginia-aligned standards and materials because our students have been in these classes. What they did in the fourth quarter of this year was starting to develop K-8 materials. So our high school students had been using Virtual Virginia AP courses. For example, if we could not have an AP teacher because there was only one student who wanted to take a class, we had students go to Virtual Virginia to take that AP class. And so with that, we're getting tiered support for administrators, school counselors, educators, students, and parents will also be included in that. And so as a participating division, some of the things that we will get are the K-12 online learning modules, which will feature fully-developed lessons and a selection of teacher-graded assignments. Because they're creating this content for everyone to use, they're going to give us some of those assessments and quizzes, projects, those will be available for our teachers as well. We also will have local teacher autonomy to use, modify, and develop modules from those resources. So if they get the content, so a full course, let's say, in kindergarten, and let's say they want to add a project that they have always done with their students in Google Classroom or Google Slides, they can easily delete the assignment that is from Virtual Virginia and add their own personalized assignment in there for their students. And then our local students will also be enrolled in a statewide professional learning network, a PLN, of Virginia educators, and they actually are grouped based on their content area. So we were able to test this, quite a few teachers actually participated in this. They had a sample course that we were able to take through Canvas recently, and we could put ourselves into groups. So I put myself, for example, in the world language group. And so there were other world language educators that would say, hey, here's a project that I've used. How do you make a quiz and use these starps of symbols for Spanish and that type of thing? So it did allow, it allows teachers from across the state to come together and get that resource and that feedback from each other on the best way to use the program. And I'm going to let Mr. Littlefield come. This is a brief video from Canvas that tells you about some of the features and you can kind of see what the platform looks like.
From one-to-one flipped classroom initiatives to social media and mobile apps, there have never been more tools for teaching and learning. But how do you get all the cool classroom technology without all the complexity? The answer is Canvas, the learning management system that makes teaching and learning easier. Maybe you saw a new app at a conference, or you want to help your students collaborate more. With Canvas, you can integrate powerful digital tools into your classroom with just a few clicks. Insert audio or video anywhere in your courses without uploading, rendering, or worrying about compatibility. It's just there, ready for students to access from any device. Change a due date or add new assignment, and it automatically appears everywhere, so you only have to do things once. And with Canvas' fast and efficient magic markers tool, your real-time assessments of live student work can be recorded, linked to outcomes, and uploaded to your gradebook simultaneously. And for better student tracking and reporting, Canvas' SpeedGrader aligns common core and state standards with rubrics and outcomes. The best part? SpeedGrader lets you grade or annotate student work without ever downloading a file. If you're moving towards formative assessment, Canvas' Learning Mastery Gradebook is an optional one of your students' progress based on standards, not grades. The Learning Mastery for Students tab provides transparency so students and parents can follow academic progress. Now, identifying students who need extra help and empowering them to take control of their own learning has never been easier. All of the other things you do, like taking attendance, creating seating charts, and managing your classroom, Canvas makes those easier, too. And with customizable notifications, Canvas connects everyone, teachers, students, parents, administrators, in ways that are engaging and relevant for them. From kindergarten through high school, Canvas provides a platform and tools that make teaching and learning easier for the modern classroom.
Some of the highlighted features, what you may have seen in the video, it does have features such as an audio and video messages between teachers and students, so students can record messages to their teacher and leave those for them. It's also Chrome-compatible, that was a big piece with us moving towards Chromebooks. It does have an app. I actually have it on my phone where I can see the courses that I'm in as well, and so students will be able to use it on their phones. It integrates with other platforms such as eMedia VA, Khan Academy, GoOpen VA, Edgenuity, and other platforms can be linked within there, so students won't have to log into a different site. They can actually just go into Canvas and there'll be a link in there. We are working on what is known as a single sign-on, which means that students log into Google Chrome and then it allows them to log into all the other platforms. So they don't have to remember multiple passwords or reset, they only have to remember the one that they need to get into their Google accounts. I mentioned the mobile app as well. It also has a really neat feature, you know, Zoom was what we utilized for a lot of the elementary teachers. It has a secured video conferencing tool, and it's actually embedded in Canvas, so you don't have to worry about outside people jumping into your video calls. Only those students who are enrolled in the class can be in that video call. It'll actually record it for 14 days and keep it there for live streaming, so if you missed the video call, a student can go back and watch the video. Lesson has a whiteboard feature, so teachers can teach virtually using a whiteboard, so they can put certain students into groups. So if you only wanted to invite half of your class to a session because you want to do small groups, you can also do that, so the whole class doesn't have to be involved. There are collaborative workspaces. Like I said, Google integrates seamlessly, so for students and teachers, when they open Google within Canvas, it'll look just like it does when they open Google on their Chromebook. So they won't see much difference as far as the Google features. All those Google features will still be in there. It integrates with frontline professional development system for professional learning. This is big for our teachers because this will allow us to take courses that other districts have been provided or have created, and it will actually allow us to have our teachers sign up through our frontline program, and they'll actually be put in the course. And when they finish the course, their points will go right into the frontline system so that they don't have to worry about multiple platforms to go between different platforms. It has robust course notifications and parent features. There are features where a parent can see the entire course, like all the material, so they don't have to wonder, what is my student learning? They will be able to just see it. They can't manipulate it, but they can still see what's in there, so they can ask student-specific things. You saw how they can get email messages, text messages, depending upon what features are turned on for their students. There's also a graphic analytics reporting engine, which we're still examining what that looks like. Part of that is the learning mastery platform. So, for example, you can give a quiz, and instead of a quiz giving a grade, it'll say, this student has mastered, or this student is still moving towards that or progressing, or this student is not there yet, versus giving As and Bs. It'll help teachers kind of group students based on what their needs are. And then lastly, it's customizable by the district and teachers. So there is a lot of content already readily available in Canvas, but what we're focusing on is the Virtual Virginia content because we know that is Virginia-aligned, so that's what we will be starting with, with our teachers. They've been slowly rolling that content out to us. The first course that we received was a course called Growing with Canvas, which is the teacher course to help them learn what the platform looks like. They actually get a sample course, which is called the Sandbox, and in that sandbox, they can play with adding quizzes and tests and pretend like they were actually creating their own course. We're hoping to have that ready for a select group of teacher leaders and our central office staff within the next week so that they can start working through that module. And so by August, when our teachers return, we can put them all into that platform. They can get their training well before they come back in September and be ready to go. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Question, Mr. Riddick?
Madam Chair, in regards to testing and making sure that we're actually measuring accurate information, because when students cheat, it hurts them, are we going to look at utilizing lockdown browsers for testing?
So one of the things, it's not, there's not a lockdown browser per se that we will be using, but it does have a time on it. Students have to log in. So that's one of the features we're looking at, what those are. I will tell you that starting out the school year, we are not looking at doing any heavy assessments. We're looking at doing customized, short, skill-based assessments to see where students are as the students progress through those standards. So we're not looking at giving a 30-question test that, you know, all the students could just record answers and share with their friends. There's also time you can put on it, so you can say all the students must do it within this window. So if, for example, you need to do the test on Monday at 10 o'clock, the teacher can say your test has to be completed by X amount of time, and maybe this other student needs a different timeframe, so that you have those options as well in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? No questions? Thank you, Dr. Davenport. And next, we have under new business, citizen advisory committee applicants, and Ms. Gardner, I believe, has a report from the board for each of these. CTE advisory, gifted education, local advisory committee for special education, CAC, parent advisory council, Title I, safety audit, and school health. Yes, Ms. Gardner?
The following applicants were selected to serve on the various committees and council, and I'll read each one and the member's name. CTE advisory committee, Bob Holcomb, Reverend Dr. Carl Swett Jr., Schillerie Skinner, Ivana Wallace, Fran Dooman, Joan Turner, and Hosea Cartagena. For the local advisory committee for special education, Kristen O'Neill, Angela Bickerton, Regina Hall, Anitra Simmons, Pamela Charles, Saul Godinez, Katie Morse. For the school health advisory boards, Regina Tindall, Janice Copeland, Karen Bazemore, Sharon Eaton, Devon Blair, and Lori Triplet. For the safety audit advisory, Emil Reynolds, Carlton Wiggins, E.C. Harris, Brandon Rondelman, Thomas Turner, Jeannie Swain. For gifted education advisory committee, Deanna For Gifted Education Advisory Committee, Deanna Austin, Diana G., Diane G., Sylvia Bond, Sharon Eaton, Troy Maryfield, Carly Bosco. For the Parent Advisory Council, Paula Dozier, Kalisa Joyner, Nida Worrell, and Kathleen Coin.
Thank you, Clerk. And this is an action, excuse me?
We need to mention that that's just the appointees, and that more people will be added, right?
That was what I was gonna say.
That's the appointees from the board. Each board member was allowed one appointment for each committee.
Right. Yeah. Go ahead. I was just gonna say, that doesn't mean that those are the only people who can be on the committee, and wanted to make sure people knew that. That does not mean that they're the only people who can serve on those committees. Those were just the individual people from each of the boroughs that board members got to appoint.
So, it's my understanding we'll be meeting in the next, we'll be meeting again and looking at all the other applicants?
If there are other applicants.
The other, yes, there are other applicants for every, and we'll be looking to put those on as well.
Right.
Okay.
And this is an action item?
I move that we approve.
Second.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have Superintendent's Revised Evaluation Tool. This is an action item.
Madam Chair, if there is any explanation necessary, would you like for me to move forward with that?
Yes.
The Revised Evaluation Tool was used instead of the normal evaluation tool, because this year, the, because there weren't, there was no testing done this year, there are, in the original evaluation tool, there were seven standards. The seventh standard was based on assessment. This board chose to use the assessment scores gleaned from the SOL test as a measure of the superintendent's appointment. As we developed this tool in 2014, and as we took the training for developing the tool, each board was trained by the Virginia School Boards Association, and we could determine the standards that we were gonna choose, the selection of items that we were going to choose, and the standard by which we were gonna measure our superintendent's performance. This board chose to use the seventh standard, and in that seventh standard, we had to use the seven standards, and in that seventh standard, our assessment was based on the performance of the school system on those tests. We did not have the test this year. As a matter of fact, nationally, there were no tests this year because of COVID-19. So, we modified that instrument this year. We modified that instrument based on the fact that there were no assessments to use, and so, we had six standards, and this is why we have six standards instead of seven. So, now, I'm asking that the board, we move to approve using the instrument as we modified it with the six standards.
Second.
I'd like to speak to that. So, the teachers, they had all seven standards, and they had a lot of tests that they did besides the SOLs. I did share with the board that only about 15% to 20% was based on SOLs. Ms. Jenkins and I went to VSBA training as well on that. Under Standard 7, there's A through, A through G or something, there are a lot of, there are still a lot of test data that we could use for that evaluation. I think it's more, for me, it's more to give a baseline start as a comparison to look for next year. Next year, I mean, maybe we won't have SOLs next year, so we're never gonna use any baseline for any student achievement. I don't, that I just don't understand. There were a lot of scores that could be used, and I think we should go ahead and use it and modify it, just like it was done for teachers. Teachers had to use something different than SOLs as well, and they were asked to do Standard 7, and of course, the percents were modified, because it wasn't a big task, but we still have a lot of data that we could use. And I think we're called upon, that is, a board, to use, to have data, and to look at how students progressed from, you know, from September through March. Teachers worked really hard, and they had student scores, and to just ignore that, I don't think it's healthy for morale either. Teachers felt if you used Standard 7 for me, then why isn't the superintendent, why isn't number 7 being used for him? I think it's a real downer, in terms of teacher morale, if we don't, consistent, consistency. We need to be consistent, and if you use Standard 7 for teachers, then we should have used Standard 7s across the board. So, I'm not in favor of this tool, just because I feel it really will affect our teacher morale, and it's not consistent. And we've waited this long, I mean, it'd be great, we can put in, AP scores are coming in, IB scores just came in. There is a lot of data that we could use, and I think it would be to Dr. Gordon's benefit. I have no doubt that he's going to improve scores, but we have to have a baseline to start with. So, I would really, you know, my, definitely my, I'm an advocate for keeping it consistent, and what is good for teachers has to be good for administrators. We use the same tool, so that's, I think that we should not, we should, these tools, I don't think are appropriate to use. Right now, we need to keep morale at the highest we can. We need to really be doing everything we can to keep a very positive environment, and if we're not consistent, then I think that's a problem. And besides, I do think there are a lot of, a lot of data we can use. So, I'd rather see us postpone this, get a good tool, be consistent, and do it in August, and I don't think it would hurt anything.
Madam Chair, I just wanna highlight something real quick, and then we can move forward. Dr. Gordon hasn't been here that long, so it's not fair to, in my opinion, to give him a full year of evaluations, when, truth be told, from September to mid-October, Dr. Harrison was at the rings. From mid-October to February, we was in normal school operation. Abruptly, in the month of March, everything changed as we know it. That's not consistent enough, in my opinion. Our teachers, for most of them, have been here since September. Dr. Gordon didn't have that same luxury. So, that's why I support striking Standard 7.
Ma'am?
Yes.
I just wanted, wanted to say, when we develop the tool, when we develop an instrument, and it is not based on Dr. Gordon at all, it's a superintendent's instrument that's used across the state. The other thing is that, when we develop an instrument like this, we have to have consistent data that you use for this type of instrument. Teachers have about a 40% impact on student performance. Principals have about a 20% impact on student performance, according to the research. Superintendents, this is direct impact, actually have less than that. However, you have to have a consistent benchmark. You can't just use any kind of test, say, AP test, or SAT test, or any kind of test, and just pull it together and say, well, we have some tests, so we can use it. You cannot do that and not have consistency. What we have done for the last six years is use our end-of-year test data to evaluate our superintendent in that Item 7, because we did not have that, we did not use that. And so, in an effort to be consistent, that's what we've done. I know that in some situations, we did not use that for teacher evaluation. In some situations, we did not use that. I would hope that our teachers would not have been penalized for that, since we didn't have test scores this year. And as I recall, in February, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Superintendent, in February, we had some problems with giving the SOL test, because there was some kind of breakdown in the, in the state testing system. Was there not, I see some heads shaking, there was some kind of breakdown in the state testing system to start with. That's one. So, I can't imagine teachers were penalized for it. And then, after that, in the state, testing was dropped, and then nationally, testing was dropped. So, I don't believe that anybody was penalized for that reason, and that is the reason that we did not use Standard 7. But, but that is the reason that we didn't use it, so I have nothing else to say.
Madam Chair, I call for the question.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have public speakers, and Ms. Gardner, would you give the instructions?
It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the, of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments and matters germane to the business of the school board; two, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board, through the exercise of its discretion, decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; six, refrain from making any comment regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate forum for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law, or where appropriate court proceeding. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comments, but will not comment unless granted permission by the chair. The chairman or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order, subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman, a city, a city police officer shall act as sergeant at arms at all board meetings. That officer shall, under the discretion of the chairman or of the presiding officer, have charge of the board chambers, the board conference room, the waiting areas, and corridors adjacent thereto, and the school administrative, administration building, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. First, we have Paige Kluck.
I am Paige Kluck, but this time, I am a sixth-grade math teacher of 67 wonderful students of Kingsfork Middle School. Just real quickly on the evaluation, though, teachers were held to Standard 7. We did have to use alternating dat, data, not the data that maybe we were used to, and many teachers' evaluation did suffer because of Standard 7. Dr. Gordon, as much as you talk about equity, I would think you would want to be held equit, is equally accountable for our students as we are. So, I'm sad that you're not fighting for that for yourself, so you do know how much improvement you do for your children. To start with, as a teacher, I have two mottos. Once you're my student, you're always my child, and you're forever in my heart. And I teach every child just the way I want my own child being taught. And that's why I'm here to speak tonight, on behalf of my students and my parents that I had this last school year. I've been collecting comments and concerns from the parents since March 13th, and when I told them I was, I sent out an email this week, told them I was coming to speak and that their voices would be heard, I got a few more comments back. I'll start with some of the comments from the parents. Some of these things have been said, but out of respect to my parents, I do want them to know that I am speaking on their behalf. I do have their permission to share this. The edgenet annuity lessons were too lengthy, and too many things were assigned. They know you're in a tough position, but please consider the health and safety of students and staff in making these tough decisions. A parent said she wasn't comfortable sending her child when he is probably at a high probability of contact, contracting the virus. His health, safety, and education are a priority. Students with learning disabilities had a really hard time with the virtual learning, and just being focused at home, and this parent worked, so she wasn't there to address, help her child. One of the parents said they'd hate to see children have to wear a mask. And then, another parent likes the virtual classroom idea, but wants the children to have a virtual class every day, they have their laptops, and they can see their teacher and communicate with their teacher through the laptops. Now, the questions were quite a few. How will the students get to and from school safely? Will lockers be sanitized, or will they even be used? How will you ensure bathrooms are cleaned properly? Will student, will classrooms be sanitized before students enter each block, or will they stay in one room all day? Will students' temperatures be taken? If a student is exposed to a virus and has to be quarantined, will that affect their attendance? If staff members are exposed, will they have to use their leave, and who will teach their child? Has the board taken in account the disproportionate effect of the virus on some communities that we serve? What safeguards are being put in place to ensure that students receive inclusive services and the appropriate amount of support, and equally important, receiving accommodations? How am I supposed to support my children's education needs when I'm there completing assignments, I'm at work? Will a special ed teacher be in the room with a gen ed teacher for inclusion classrooms? If online, online school continues, how will you provide a proper level of work and support for children with IEPs? If face-to-face is how we go, how will you serve children with asthma and other medical conditions? How many students will you have in your resource classes, like PE and other art and music? Did special education teachers and parents serve on the committees that help come up with the plan? Will all accommodations be the same for the schools? Will teachers have their temperatures taken daily? If we turn to the buildings, will we abide by the three-foot or six-foot rule separation? Will students and staff have to sign waivers to come back to school stating they will not hold the school's system liable if they contract COVID? Since supplies can't be shared, what extra supplies will parents have to provide? Will the school system provide face masks, disinfectant supplies to teachers, or they become part of a supply list? And will weather, fire, and active shooter drills be conducted? And how will you assure my child gets to lunch, moves to the lunch line, and eats safely? Like I said, that's from my parents. I take pride in keeping an open line of communication with them. They are concerned, and we all want what's best for our children, so I hope you keep those in mind as y'all make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kluck. Scott Agee? Mr. Agee could not appear tonight. He's not here. Thank you very much. Now, we need a motion to go into a second closed meeting. Mr. Law?
Motion is needed to go into a second closed meeting to discuss the following item and subject pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The performance evaluation of the school superintendent, all of which is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So moved. So moved.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We will adjourn to closed session.